I was going to dry out. I have to be here.
You would've forgotten.
Eddie, you get it.
Twenty-seven, twenty thirteen, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners and Staff.
I agree with you.
My most gracious from all heavenly Father, we thank you today. We thank you for wanting you to come out. County Commission meeting this time. This time they ask you to bless these commissioners that make decisions to protect the entire county. Christ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the United States of America, we do hereby lay before your citizens one nation, a God, and justice, law, and justice.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. At this time, we're going to get started with our, uh, Commissioner meeting. I'd like to get a motion to accept our conciliatory.
Come on, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
A second by Mr. Mike Dang. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, before we get too far along, I wanted to, and Marcia probably doesn't even want me to do this, but I wanted everybody to know that Marcia Mathis is here. She worked for Senator Monford's office. I can tell you that during the session, Senator Monford and Marcia and all the staff did a great job helping us with several issues. Medicaid issue, the DOC Corrections issue with the inmate work crews. We appreciate what the Senator does, Marcia, and you too. And just wanted to recognize you. If you want to say anything, you're welcome to, but we wanted to make sure everybody knew that you were here.
Thank you so much. Senator Monford just asked if I made one of these once a month, and so we're just here to be his, uh, his ears and, uh, and eyes, and if you need anything, we're, uh, we're here to help.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Marcia. At this time, we'll move along to our, uh, public hearing with Mr. David.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, in front of you have a memorandum from the Planning Department from our Planning and Development Review Board, carrying on August nineteenth, which was properly noticed. At that meeting, we had one application from Doug and Barbara Cooksy, uh, with regard in St. Joe Beach in terms of road setback encroachment. They wanted to add a screen porch. Um, they made a packet and a presentation to the Planning Board, um, at which time they said they were going from thirteen point, thirteen feet two inches to a total of fourteen feet, uh, an additional encroachment of eight inches. Um, after significant discussion, they provided an aerial, um, there was a final, uh, survey that didn't provide. There's a recommendation of the Planning Board of the Quam that was there of a two-over vote with one abstention to approve and recommend that encroachment to this, uh, commission.
Take the motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant, got a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no. Go to our time staff. Ms. Carey. Chair. General.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. In front of you, um, I placed a one-page spreadsheet. This is the detail for our fall media plan that I had discussed. We delayed the plan due to weather, which actually gave us more time to negotiate. These are net media rates, so we'll buy the media. Um, I've highlighted down below on Google the three thousand dollar additional cost for Google. Currently, I have approval to spend seven thousand dollars a month for, on Google, but because I've seen some decline in web traffic in August, which is typical, and I delayed a week, I'd like to, I have this, this money in my budget this year, and I'd like to increase just for the month of September, three thousand dollars more for Google. We did go out and vet, um, these programs, looking for the most targeted lists and the right mediums. We will reach an audience of just about eight hundred ninety-five thousand, and I'd like to start implementing the program through Pinterest and Facebook and these net media outlets, um, starting next Wednesday.
Come here.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore, second by Mr. Yeager.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I clearly understand it stood for the month of September. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all.
Second by Mr., uh, Mr. Yeager, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Thank you. Um, one more topic. Interestingly enough, as you recall, earlier this summer, we had a production company come on in, and we moved forward to create, um, a contract and a sizzle reel for the South Gulf County Volunteer Fire Department. They've gotten to know Gulf County a little bit more, and they've decided to change their approach, and they want to move forward with putting a reel together on Gulf County tourism through the eyes of the TDC, and, um, that could include the Gulf County Fire Department. It can include our partners. It can include fishing. There's no other show like that out there. Um, they've talked about, Chris Ailes, the producer from Cameo Production, is, um, working with another production company. There's a female production company. They were previous executives with the Oxygen Network, and now they have their own company, and they're looking to pitch to the Travel Channel, Bravo, and OWN. I've discussed this with Mr. Hammond and, um, Mr. Butler, and, um, it gives us a little bit more editorial control. Uh, it could be some great advertising opportunity that we couldn't buy, and they've made the request to go move forward for a three to five-minute reel.
I, I, I like it. I, I like the fact that it will give you more control of what's, what's being presented, uh, to protect the brand. So, yeah, if you need a motion to that, uh, to proceed with that, I'd, I'd put that form of a motion.
A motion by Mr. Yeager.
Should I go next, Chairman?
Second by Mr. Mike Dang.
Um, I may need to abstain.
Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, there's an extension need to state the, the record under eight Form B, so if you know of a conflict, you need to state it. If you don't know of a conflict right now, you can proceed.
Let me go in and abstain it, because I may be part of it.
And then we'll give you, if Ms. Carey can give you the form, if you fill it out, Commissioner.
Motion by Mr. Yeager, I got a second by Mike Dang. Do I have any opposed? Motion parrot with one abstain.
Thank you.
Right. Mr. General.
Yes, sir. I have the, uh, I revised the South County grant, and, uh, it's going to need a signature, so if I could get the Chairman's signature on that.
You need a motion to that, Judge?
Please.
Sub move.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Dang. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
With that revision, we are starting into our phase of, uh, recycling, and we'll be working into it more gradually. Uh, I anticipate that by the time I leave here in a couple of years, hint, hint, uh, that we'll be into it full-blown. Uh, my goal is to get out of the landfill business as quickly as possible. Okay?
Sub move.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. David.
Yes, sir. Um, at the last meeting and the information packet, I presented a progress, uh, planning progress report for your review. Um, for you today is, uh, I made one little change to it to reference the August rain, uh, event, and beyond that, nothing else changed, but I need the Board's approval of it. This is part of our CRS certification, so if the Board is willing, uh, is reviewing and willing to accept it, uh, I need your approval, the Board to approve it.
Sub move, Mr. Chairman. It's a good program, and it, it certainly saves our citizens.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
The last, um, Mr. Chairman, is, um, for the Beaches Fire Department, we submitted, uh, a bid for some bunker gear, um, bid number twelve thirteen dash sixteen. We had three bids. After reviewing all the specs and looking over much of the gear, um, um, the department decided to go with the Sunbelt, which met the specifications that we submitted, even though it is the higher bid, um, but it meets our requirements and, and requesting the Board's approval to set Sunbelt Inc. for one thousand three hundred ninety-three for coat and pants.
Good.
You need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant, got a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed?
Uh, quick question, looking at, uh, Mr. Rich.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record here, uh, are you going to, uh, get with the fire coordinator and hand down your, uh, any of the equipment?
Yes, sir. Okay, yes. So that was, by the way, if the Board's, if, to set my mind, if the Board will allow other departments to ride on the same bid, if it's permissible to, uh, if they wish to get some?
Okay, any of these other outlying departments, they need any of your gracious, they will hand down to them.
Oh, yes, and, and those who want the new gear to tag along with it, we deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant, I have a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
That's all for me, Mr. General.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things. Um, first of all, um, I received an email yesterday regarding the county EMS grant, and for the year, we will get one thousand thirty-five dollars. This is for training, and in order to, um, receive those funds, we have to send in a two-page application and a resolution. I had put a draft of the resolution in front of each of you. We do that same resolution every year, just saying that we're going to spend, um, the money on, on pre-hospital EMS costs, and so I just need permission, um, from the Board to, um, get the Chairman's signature and submit that resolution and application.
Uh, sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Dang. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Um, the other thing I have is in reference to County Road three eighty-six. Um, I believe a little while back, we had some discussion, and the Board had requested a letter be submitted to DOT regarding the striping project. Um, we have received funding, um, but it'll end up being over half a million dollars to strike the overstreet road. But I have also applied in phases to resurface the road and to widen it so that it will have paved shoulders. And so the letter was basically asking DOT, because of the additional funding they receive this year, if they might put those, um, resurfacing projects on the fast track and move them forward, and say the half million dollars of striping, they'll be, you know, they'll go away when we do the resurfacing. We have not received a response. We, only response we received was that they did receive our letter. Um, I think Mr. Butler's made several phone calls with no response. So, we're kind of getting in a bind on the striping grant, so I, I just kind of need to know if you want me to go ahead and proceed having the road striped, or, you know, um, how you want me to handle that.
Mr. Chairman, if, if the Board would allow, let me, let me try to get with Tommy Barfield, uh, because basically what we're trying to do really is save DOT money and move the projects forward a, 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 a year or two ahead, ahead of time. Three eighty-six needs to be widened, and, and, but, but I think that we've got to move forward, uh, because that's a grant, and there's probably timelines on it. We've got to move forward with going ahead and restriping. Uh, however, if the Board will allow, Don and I will get a hold of Tommy. I, I'll get a hold of Tommy and talk to him about moving some of that money.
Mr. Chairman.
I have to put it, we, we're down to the last stretch on this grant, and Tony and I talked about yesterday in this room. If we say, okay, let's save this half million, so again, that we, all our sense to stop the road and then go in and do a paper route, but if we're going to get these other grants, we're asking our letter to do it to them. That knowledge receiving level, but the mere amount of extra pitching money dollars we got this year, and maybe our projects, uh, an idea, and it could save them half million bucks. So, that's where we are, but we don't want to cure the idea, because we may not get the money down the road when we have to strike and we're paid. So, if we, if we make contact next year, two or three, we might be over salvage, whether or not.
You know, and what I've seen in correspondence is they're recommending us going ahead with that striping project, so I think we don't have any other choice, but, but I would like to have that conversation with Tommy, because what I actually, uh, we're not, you know, it's DOT, it's a state-funded project. We're trying to save them money and, and also move the project forward, so we'll, we'll, Don and I'll try to get a hold of them.
Mr. Chairman, I remind them that's a hur- hurricane evacuation route, too.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was checking emails earlier this morning and, uh, on this striping, and, and as it was, we've stated to save money, but we saved on a county level, state of federal, this saving taxpayer money, but it looks like it may be twenty seventeen before that, uh, comes into reality on three eighty-six, so we may not have any choice but to go ahead with this striping. Not have a choice, but, uh, that's the way I read it. Any of you may want to check, uh, and see, but that's the correspondence I got. Probably, we're looking at probably twenty seventeen on three eighty-six, which in my opinion is, that's too far out, and maybe, uh, Commissioner Yeager would, uh, through back in small county can get with Barfield, and sure, we can move this down, but still with this grant, we've got this window. If we don't use it, then we lose it, so I don't know what's, uh, you do or if you don't.
Well, we certainly don't want to lose the grant, as long as we have enough time for Commissioner Yeager to reach out. I think that's what we should do.
I'll reach out Saturday. Now, do we, you, you don't need a, a motion to go ahead and proceed with the striping, do you?
Um, no, sir, I don't, I don't. I just, I would need for somebody to let me know, um, today or tomorrow, you know, um, I received the phone call yesterday on the status of the striping project from DOT, and we need to move, move forward. Um, we don't have very much time left.
Mr. Yeager and Mr. Butler will begin back with you.
As soon, as soon as you let me know something, then I'll proceed.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
That's all I have.
Mr. Michael.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Probably going to need about ten minutes this morning, if, if, if the Board will give me a little time. We were a little bit blindsided by the discussion last week, so, uh, Captain Farmer, she's been in the jail for twenty-three years. Two thousand, she was certified as a Florida Model Jail standard inspector, and, uh, try to give the Board a little history, if you will. Um, the Board will begin in just a minute. I'll give a little history about how we got to this point with the jail, how the Board took the jail back over, based on facts, official Board minutes, and correspondence.
Get the floor.
Thank you, sir. Practically six months before he was indicted and removed from office, the sheriff turned the keys of the jail over to the County Commission effective January first, two thousand seven. There were quite a number of problems at the jail at that time. Notably, the roof leaked, major maintenance issues, ongoing arguments over funding for law enforcement and the jail. What the county found most troubling was that only five of twelve officers were certified, a violation of state law, and that inmate welfare monies had been misappropriated to pay for equipment at the sheriff's office, also a violation of state law. The Board hired Julianne Day and Rachel Turner, outside contractors, to perform a two-day review of the jail and present a report to the Board. They also hired Wilkerson to write policy and procedures and present a report to the Board. The Board spent approximately twenty thousand dollars on these studies, and after receiving the report, adopted as policy of the Board of County Commissioners unanimously on June twenty-fifth, two thousand seven, to not adopt model jail standards. The report told Commissioners that it would cost one point seven million dollars to comply with Florida Model Jail standards. I just want to make it clear, that being all these discussions that happened in open County Commission meetings, I was not the jail warden, had nothing to do with the Board's decision not to adopt Florida Model Jail standards. Mrs. Day, the outside contractor, also reported that records showed that Gulf County Jail had never filed an inspection report since the program started in the mid-nineties. After that time, Chief Administrator Butler reminded the Board at the May fifth, two thousand eight budget meeting, and again on the July twenty-first, two thousand nine budget meeting, that the Board was not funding the jail to meet Florida Model Jail standards. Which brings us to the last meeting. Where Commissioner Bryan, with no prior discussion with me nor my staff, called for an inspection of the jail for compliance to Model Jail standards. This request or demand for inspection was in direct violation of adopted Board policy, which can only be changed by the County Commission as a body. I stated twice that the Florida Model Jail standard inspection would only be allowed following Board of County Commission direction or as a direct order from Chief Administrator Butler, which brings me to the topic of Florida Model Jail standards and what they are. Florida Model Jail standards are approximately seventy-one pages of rules, most of which Gulf County already complies with as best management practices. Florida Model Jail standards does not prevent liability or lawsuits, but is a tool or roadmap by which to operate a facility by. I believe the standards are well-intended, that most of it is reasonable and sound policy. I do not believe that everything in Florida Model Jail standards should, should apply to small facilities, nor is it written for that purpose. Although I was not personally a part of the decision in two thousand seven not to adopt Florida Model Jail standards, I totally agree that if you have no intention of funding the money required to meet Florida Model Jail standards, then you should not adopt them as policy. Give you two cases in point of jails that are governed by and inspected to Florida Model Jail standards. Scandia County Jail. Despite Florida Model Jail standard compliance and inspections that are up to date, Department of Justice reports that, quote, routinely, that the jail routinely violated inmate rights and segregates inmates by race, a violation of the law. Hernando County, this is taken from Tampa Bay Times article dated April fourteenth, twenty tw- twenty-ten. Hernando County taxpayers on the hook for millions of dollars, that's the headline. Hernando County Jail, a Florida Model Jail standard inspection was, was completed in January of that year, and it was a glowing report, showing no serious violations and a commitment by its administration to the facility. Less than three months later, a walkthrough by the county administrator and the sheriff of that county described the conditions as unacceptable and appalling. Several million-dollar price tag to bring that up to code, the jail was being run by an outside contractor. The bottom line is, Florida Model Jail standards, adopting them without funding is useless, and inspections do not guarantee compliance with Florida Model Jail standards. Now, subject very important to me. I have fifteen-time employees at the Gulf County Jail, and all have families that depend on them, and all have serious concerns about the loose talk and quote-unquote "out-of-the-box" thinking about outsourcing the jail to Bay County. I would like this Board to put this issue to rest today. I generally don't comment on articles in the Star, but having read the article, or editorial, as it turned out to be, which appeared on the front page of last week's Star, I'm compelled to set the record straight. First, first problem I have, quote, this is quote from the Star, "half a million in savings based upon numbers provided by county staff," end quote. Complete and total falsehood. Fact is, the numbers provided by county staff, to Commissioners, show that outsourcing the jail would in fact raise the cost, based on my report to the County Commission dated July twenty-nine, twenty thirteen. Next, where did the cost per day of housing inmates at the Gulf County Jail come from? It was printed in the Star at seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents per day. Didn't come from county staff, didn't come from me. Next, the article went on to state that Gulf County pays forty-one dollars a day to house females in Bay County, but it did not clarify that that figure only covers the cost of room and board, not transportation, not medical, not any other cost other than actual housing of the inmate in Bay County. Article goes on to say that Hammond would, quote, "run the numbers again, but those numbers have yet to be provided." Fact is, the numbers were provided to all Board members and emailed to all Board members in my report dated July twenty-nine, twenty thirteen. Next, the article compared my comments about refusing to allow a Florida Model Jail standard inspection at the jail with, quote, "a profane outburst directed at a Commissioner and that that employee was terminated." Fact is, I was following unanimously adopted County Commission policy from two thousand seven, and made it clear on two occasions that if either the Board of County Commissioners or Chief Administrator Butler directed an inspection, we would have an inspection. To do anything else, I would have been violating county policy. And finally, we're discussing Model Jail standards, M-O-D-E-L, not modern, M-O-D-E-R-N, as printed in the Star. The County Attorney has given you his recommendation on the law, which concurs with my statements at the last meeting. My request to the Board today is that you vote not to outsource to Gulf County Jail, give my employees peace of mind. I will continue to operate the jail in efficient and safe manner if it takes the taxpayers of Gulf County from my building and waste.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
I'm, I would like not to put you on the spot, Mr. Levett, but would you come up to the podium and give us kind of a note there on what you do over there, and I know Mr. Hammond has said that you've been there twenty-one years, whatever.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Let the public know how important that jail is to you. Would you do that?
Hey, good morning.
Take your name.
Um, Captain Yvette Farmer, Gulf County Jail, a detention facility. I have been with the facility now for twenty-three years. Um, I've enjoyed my job quite well, uh, as you can see by the number of years. Um, my years there at the facility, I've seen a lot, I've experienced a lot. Um, my job is to, to help oversee the jail, maintain security, uh, uh, safety and security of the facility. Uh, the inspections and the jail itself, um, I think that it is run at this time by far the best that I've seen in a number of years. I am quite pleased with it. Um, as with anything, there are some details and some things that can be polished up a little, but as far as the safety and security, I don't see anything at this point that is just life-threatening. I think, I think we're doing a, a fine job.
Anything else, Mr. [inaudible]? Thank you, Captain Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Captain, very much.
Um, yeah, I, I have, have a few comments to make. Um, the statute is clear, and it does require jails in the state of Florida to follow the Model Jail standards. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, and our attorney reiterated in his memo, there is no enforcement mechanism built into the statute. In other words, um, it doesn't state that you will be fined or that there will be any penalty for refusing to follow the jail standards. However it does so, you shall follow the jail standards. And in the jail standards, it requires an annual inspection. Now, um, Mr. Novak has provided us with a memo about the, the history of how this came about, and I won't get into all of those details, but this is a, a duty that was taken on by the State and the Department of Corrections, and they inspected jails for years. And the sheriffs of the state and the counties, Florida Association of Counties and the Florida Sheriff's Association, came together and felt that they were the proper people to be inspecting the jails, and that, that they would self-police. And they assured the legislature that if they were given that responsibility, that they would get it done, that they would form a committee, that they would develop these standards, and that they would inspect at a minimum annually each jail in this state, those run by the sheriffs, and those run by counties. Um, if they cannot get that accomplished, they risk losing that authority and having the state come in and take over inspecting, because this is something that they've agreed to do on their own. It, it does not increase liability to have an inspection. Now, if we don't meet the Model Jail standards, we need to strive to meet them, and we need to work, um, in every way that we can to try to get there. An inspection's not going to change the fact that we're not there. And if something happens in that jail, a liability exists because we are not living up to the jail standards. Um, the, the issue has been raised by Mr. Hammond, that an inspection would create liability. If we are not functioning properly, that liability is there regardless of whether we've had an inspection. The mere fact that we won't open the door and let an inspector in, you cannot inspect yourself, I appreciate the fact that Captain Farmer is certified, but you cannot inspect your own facility. There's no cost to have an inspector come in. I take this very seriously. When we incarcerate people in Gulf County, we take over their lives, and we need to assure that they are safe. Uh, the people of Gulf County deserve a jail system that operates under this requirement of the statute, and that is to strive to meet the Model Jail standards. And let's, let's be clear that the jail standards are not aspirational, they're a minimum requirement. I do believe that it's a viable option to move the inmates to Bay County, at least for a few years, until monies can be gathered to build a, a proper facility. We have issues with the facility that we have. Um, Bay, Bay County can book the inmates, they can process the inmates, we can function as a lockup. There's a movement across the country in corrections to have a regionalization of corrections, because the economies of scale make much more sense, and you would save considerable dollars building a regional facility. And you, you do not have to maintain a county jail in each county. There's nothing that says that. Now, these are things that we need to look at. We cannot continue to operate as a county and cut. We just cut our budget, and we operate the same way, and we keep cutting. And that's when services drop, liability rises. We have to start functioning more efficiently, and that is how we will save funds. And this is a, this is a, a large project. This is not something that should be put to bed by this Board. It should be examined, and the proper results should be discovered. That's something that's going to be done quickly. So I would encourage this Board to continue to look at our options. Um, the inmates in that facility have a right to be in a safe and secure facility, and the, um, the employees there have a right to be safe. and the employees there have a right to be safe.
May I respond?
I don't know.
Yes, yes, let's make.
Just briefly, if I'm understanding correctly, Ms. Bryant, you're actually willing to lay off or go away with fifteen jobs in Gulf County. We sit here and this board strives to put people to work, you know, in Gulf County. I think I'm a hundred percent correct on this, and I'm not going to get no fight next week or anything. But most of your campaign money came from Bay County. Came out of Bay County, so I don't know who's behind this. I do know this, we have a perfectly operating jail. We have very little problems over there, gentlemen. And for us to move this thing to Bay County is way too far out of the box for Mr. Michael Moore.
I'd like to respond to that. I assure you that moving approximately forty inmates into the Bay County Jail is not going to be a windfall for them. They have agreed to talk with us about moving the inmates there, they have space. This is not something that's going to be a profit generating. Is there a problem, Commissioner? No, I'll let you have the floor. So, you know, your implication about my campaign donations, this, it doesn't make any sense. It's not logical. Forty inmates moved to Bay County is not going to increase the profitability of their jail. They are willing to discuss with us and help us out. You know, it's important that we provide a safe environment and that we cut our one point two million dollar jail budget. We could have substantial savings off of that one point two million dollar budget. And all I'm saying is, it needs to be considered. We need to look at it, and we need to look at it in detail. And I am working on the details of that plan. It's a, it's a big move. It's not something that I would expect the people on this board to enter into lightly. But I think we need to look at all the details.
Well, Ms. Bryant, I'm going to speak on that, on the moving of the jail. What would I tell my citizens who come up to me and tell me as of right now that town on visiting day, when I get to visit someone, my loved ones, I got to go away to Panama City. Some of them might not have transportation. So incarcerating a family, we're going to punish, incarcerating an individual, if you're going to punish a family member too for not seeing his relatives for being incarcerated. I've been through the jail several times. I have not seen nothing out of the way I think is safe. I'm no lax and ineffective, but I do have common sense. And walking through the jail, I don't, I really don't see what you're trying to describe. I'm not for laying off nobody. I can help it, I'm not for laying off nobody. Right now, we're trying to create jobs for people, not lay people off. So I just, that's just the way I feel about the jail myself. Anything else from any other commissioners?
One quick comment, Chairman, if I may. Mr. Hammond, just for clarification, four o'clock in the morning, one of Sheriff Harrison's had to bring in an inmate. Now, we've got to have somebody there to, uh...
That's correct.
Am I correct? We've got to have somebody there to receive this person in.
Yes, sir. I'm not a lawyer, we have a paid lawyer that gives you advice, but the state law says that the jail, the county jail has to book the inmates in the county where they're arrested. That's what state law is. And while you can't save money with this deal, I mean, it's an asinine thing. There's no county in the state of Florida that doesn't have a jail. I mean, we're not a charter county, but the figures that I gave you on that twenty-ninth, July twenty-ninth letter, show that it costs more. And you're going to talk about liability? Now, if you just have one person there to accept an inmate, you're going to have one person there with an inmate, or they may have ten inmates come in. They may have a drug round up and bring them in. You have to have somebody there twenty-four seven to cover that jail. And it's not just covering the jail. We do many things that are required by law. We have to register felons. When a sex offender comes to Gulf County, the first stop they have to make is to buy arms. They have to register with Mr. Buchanan, then they have to come get fingerprinted and tell everybody where they're at and give them their address and give them their telephone number. When somebody moves into the county that's a felon, they have to report within some of the hours of moving into the county. So there are a lot of things, a lot of moving parts, you can't get out of having a jail facility. Now, you could pay to house everybody in Bay County, and Bay County is a great jail. They spent seventeen point three million dollars on their jail last year. Seventeen point three million, which is two and a half times your entire revenue in tax levy for Gulf County. They run a great jail, it's a credit. We're not Bay County, and I can tell you this, I've been here twenty-one years. Jail runs better today than it has ever run. It runs more efficiently than it has ever run. And at the end of the day, this all boils down to, if a commissioner or someone wants to fire Michael Hammond, fire me. Don't take my other fourteen employees and hold them hostage, because it's not even rational to have this discussion. If you want information before you throw firearms, you come and get the information of how we got here. It wasn't Michael Hammond's decision not to adopt Florida model jail standards, it's the County Commission's decision. It is the unanimous policy of the County Commission. Now, we meet virtually everything in that policy. There are some things that we cannot meet. And if you adopt that policy, I'm fine with it. I'm going to come back within the next two weeks and say, here's what you've got to do to meet it. Now, you're going to pay for it. Well, out of the way. So, my suggestion is, if you're not going to pay for it, go adopt it.
That's right. That's great, I'm glad you brought that point out. All right, when the inmate comes in, Sheriff Harrison has to take one of his vehicles and transport that to Bay County, or do you have to do it? Who transports to Bay County?
Somebody's got to transport to Bay County if you were to close the jail, but right now, the only thing we do is female transport. And we, we, we can't take a deputy off the road for three or four hours.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm a director and, you know, and I don't, I have no obligations to anyone in Bay County. I don't, you know, I don't. My lawyer does to Gulf County here, and that's where I'm going to keep it. But anyway, then if you had to get court time, you've got to go back and retrieve that. You'd have to drive back, just like, we house the females over there. And one of the reasons is the cost to house them here. It is cheaper in that sense to house a female over there, am I correct at that?
Yes, sir, but the cost of a female, and Captain Farmer got a call on Saturday, said we had a pregnant female in Bay County. We have to pay for all those things. It turned out it was an inmate, thank God, because I was trying to get her out, because we tried to get them out as fast as possible. But that's just a fraction. Right now, a female inmate, and we have a great work relationship, and I talk with Anglin all the time, and I talk with Sheriff McKethan all the time. I've never had a discussion with them about housing our male inmates, but that's beside the point. We have a bill right now from an inmate that's in question from Bay County Jail for a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for one of the female inmates that was taken to the hospital and after she was released. But the forty-one dollars a day only covers room and board. It doesn't cover any other cost associated with that deal.
It was all medical, all medical, Gulf County's responsibility.
All medical, anything else, that's right. They feed them and they house them and they close them, and that's it. At the end of the day, we saved money by housing females in Bay County by cutting four positions, three of which were on field, but out of model jail standards, which we, most of which, it is right here, most of which we comply with every bit of it, says that you have to hire a female officer on duty twenty-four seven if you have female. We had a hard time keeping female officers. And that is a very high liability thing, and that is something that I said we cannot risk, and that's something that we housed, and we saved quarter of a million dollars by housing the females in Bay County.
Listen, Michael, how many females were we averaging?
Well, we averaged five. Last Monday, we had three, we had seven rest today. So it varies on a daily basis.
How many do we average?
Sir?
Female inmates.
We average about forty. And I counted this morning, it's thirty-three, I believe.
Ellen, we need to put this to rest once and for all. That's just my opinion, and we'll take it from there.
Then the commissioner's entertaining with a motion.
I would like to just respond to some of the comments by Mr. Hammond. First of all, I would like to put to rest that this is a personal issue. This has nothing to do with you, Mr. Hammond. This is a business discussion, and we are in budget time, so I'm looking at everything in the budget. In examining the budget and the one point two million dollar budget for the jail, I requested information from the county administrator, Mr. Butler, and I believe he worked with you in providing that information. And you did provide the information, so you knew that I was looking at the jail and the way that it functions. So this wasn't something that blindsided you. And I asked about the inspection, I was told that we weren't required to be inspected, and upon further research, I discovered that we were. In the meantime, I also was called by folks in the community who have concerns about the conditions of the jail. Now, I have loyalty to Gulf County, and that is why I'm approaching this. This has nothing to do with Bay County. If they took our inmates in, it's to assist with us. I'm sure that you know Sheriff McKethan. He has a soft spot in his heart for Gulf County, and he tries to work with everybody in the region, as I'm sure Sheriff Harrison would take the same position. I think that we all work together, we're not an island. We should function with the surrounding counties and all work together. But as far as some of these issues that you're bringing up, you're just not thinking them through, and you're not looking at the options. The daily pay does cover the medical for the female inmates inside of the facility. It does not cover the outside medical. We would have to cover that anyway, if they were here or if they were in Bay County and they go and seek outside medical help, they have to leave the facility. We have to cover that either way. And we would cover that there, we cover that here. But yes, Bay County does cover their inside medical treatment. And as far as court, I've spoken with Judge McFarland. He does first appearance by video, he can work around this. Right off the bat, I asked him if this would be an issue for him, and he said that if it made sense financially, he can work with it. And again, you talk about loyalty. All it takes is one incident for this county to have a tremendous amount of liability. And to me, that is loyalty to Gulf County. And there are a lot of folks out there that are concerned. So I am not ready to put this issue to rest.
Chairman, the only thing I would say is, we've looked at this issue before. And I think at the end of the day, we'd all like to be up to those model standards. However, I can't afford to put that on the back of my taxpayer without a plan that says that it'll save money. In looking at the facts, I don't see those savings. And at the end of the day, I appreciate all of us looking outside the box, because that's one of the things we talked about during the budget hearing, is we've got to think outside the box. You know, we've cut from thirteen point six, we've said this multiple times, but I'm going to say it again, we've cut from thirteen point six in that overall budget down to seven point six. We've come to the point that it's hard to find more dollars without thinking outside the box. However, in looking at the numbers, I don't agree that it's a savings. I think that we, you know, it would actually probably be a cost. And in looking at the report from the attorney, from Mr. Hammond, and all, you know, I think that justifies this. I agree with the board, in two thousand and seven, it said, you know, the established board policy. I agree with that policy, I think we should proceed. I think we should continue to look outside the box, but this is one of the things that I just don't agree with the numbers, and I just leave it at that.
Well, I will continue to work through the options and am happy to present a plan to this board in the future with all of the details worked out. And I, of course, would not want us to take on something that did not save us money.
One more, Chairman, and I will prove. This is from, I want to just read this, it's two paragraphs, and looking over this, and if I may, I'd like to just read this. It says, "The Florida Sheriff's Association states, 'As its goal for the MISU,' that's a Florida model jail, 'as Florida Model Jail Standards Committee, 'is to develop and continually enforce model jail standards adopted by the group.'" And we're talking about the Florida Sheriff's, by that group. Currently, here's the kicker right here. Currently, in Florida, there are no mandatory statutory enforcement mechanisms through sanctions or penalties in place by which the Florida model jail systems are imposed." Now, that one, I don't know, sir, just about. Yes, Florida Association would likely be a part of it, but no, you're not bound. May I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep the jail in Gulf County and we put this issue to rest.
I got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore. Can I get a second?
I'll second it and for discussion, further discussion.
Discussion by Mr. Yeager.
I don't even know if we need this motion, we've already got board policy. But that's fine to clear it up and go on, move on to the next issue.
And that's why I want, that's why I put the motion out, Mr. Yeager, so there'd be no misunderstanding, we can come back to public records, review it. This is my motion to keep it in Gulf County.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore, got a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? Motion carries five and no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, the first item I had is with regards to an update on the Port Authority. Last Tuesday afternoon, the various parties appeared before Judge Fischel on summary judgment hearings. Parties had submitted summary judgment motions that had been put off, I believe, on three different occasions. On August twentieth, the actual four arguments were conducted in front of Judge Fischel. He took six or seven various counts in the summary judgment motions into consideration and indicated he'd reserve on the issue. And we put it back to the various parties going forward. He also indicated there may be additional requests for additional time. Obviously, the issues were extensive, a review of the law as well as the arguments by both sides. And as that progresses, and we have a further update from Judge Fischel, I'll report to all the commission as well as the public. The last meeting, if you recall, Michael Spellman was here with regards to an update on our countywide review of the Shelby County case before the Supreme Court, and as well as an update in terms of redistricting in the county. I've corresponded with Michael on anticipating the scope of services engagement later this week, as well as a projected budget and a timeline and a schedule. Once I have that, I'll submit that into the consent for the commission's review and ideally have you all approve it at your next meeting so that the appropriate funding is set aside for Mr. Spellman and his experts to proceed. I've also reached out to the supervisor of elections and let him know, obviously, that you have ordinarily given approval to move forward, so he prepares himself and his staff to begin working with Mr. Spellman as Ms. Griffin's office and Mr. Hammond worked under Ms. Griffin two years ago, assembling the same type of information, providing that to him. But Tuesday's been today, ideally, you'll have that in there to approve and consider or respond to. In front of each of you, you have two ordinances. I'd like to request permission today to go out for advertisement in the Star with regards to these. As you recall, back on June eleventh, this commission decided and voted to assume the responsibilities for the county probation program. Consistent with that and following through on all those changes, the county has now taken that back over as of June twenty-seventh. The program's running right now through the county court and our county jail facility, and the probationers are being processed and then monitored, and as well as the finances are being taken in through the clerk's office. One of the final steps in discussing with Judge McFarland, as well as Mr. Hammond, in taking this program back over, is the smaller counties in the state that do not outsource this and keep this in-house, if you will, under the county. There's an essential element, which is establishing the probation administration fees by ordinance, as well as the administrative fee and the intake fee. Currently, right now, there's been various discussions in Tallahassee. There's been lobbyists in movement on both sides of the issue with regards to how about on pre-trial release fees as well as probation fees. Currently, there's nothing in the statutes. And under her rule, as you're reading the ordinance I provided to each of you, I'd like to recommend that we advertise this and consider it for a public hearing and adoption in your September meeting. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read it for the first time and then consider it for adoption in your September meeting. Especially the one and two, they are similar ordinances, and I'll just read it with regards to probation services. It's an ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, establishing probation service administrative fees entitled probation service fee for Gulf County, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the Gulf County, or the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, found and determined that its regular meeting on June eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, Gulf County shall serve as a permissible and appropriate entity to supervise and perform the... serve as a permissible and appropriate entity to supervise and perform the oversight administration of its own misdemeanor probation services. Whereas the Commissioners duly authorized motion and properly voted to assume the administration of misdemeanor probation services effective June twenty seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Pursuant to Florida Statute nine forty-eight, the county has a statutory defined obligation that reserves the right and ability to administer the misdemeanor probation services under the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners for those offenders sentenced by the county court. Pursuant to Florida Statute one twenty-five, the county shall have the power to carry out the very own county government inclusive of power to adopt its own rules that which are not inconsistent with general or special law. Pursuant to Florida Statute one twenty-five, additionally, the county shall reserve the powers to adopt the ordinance necessary for exercise of its powers and perform acts which are in common interest of the people of Gulf County and exercise all powers and privileges not specifically prohibited by law. Pursuant to Florida Constitution Article, uh, thirteen, the county shall have such power of self-government as is provided by general or special law in this Commission Law and Act and the manner prescribed by general law, county law, which is not inconsistent with general or special law. And whereas the county upon assuming the administration of the misdemeanor probation services must settle administrative fees for the offender sentenced by the county court to probation, now therefore be ordained that the county, Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, on section one, offenders sentenced by the Gulf County County Court shall pay an initial one-time ten dollar administrative fee upon sentencing and formally entering the county probation program. To the offender sentenced by the county court, Gulf County shall pay a monthly probation administrative fee of fifty dollars per month in the county probation program. The fee is due upon the first date of entering probation program and the one month anniversary of that date each month thereafter. The three all fees are due and shall be paid to the Gulf County Clerk of Court Office located at Gulf County Courthouse, one thousand Cecil G. Carson Boulevard. Provides for conflict, severability, and effective date. It will be a retroactive date of August first to be consistent with what we enacted and you, this county commission, need to assume responsibilities for this program. These fees are consistent with what's being collected by the clerk's office and being enforced by the county jail. And it will be advertised and then be put up for a public hearing and adoption, both ordinances, one and two, at your first meeting in September. With your authorization, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go out for advertisement.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, to go ahead and advertise and go through the process of adopting these ordinances.
Got a motion by Mr. Smiley.
And that would include both ordinances.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second on both.
Motion by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, in front of each of you, there is a yellow paperclip and it's a summary of the interlocal agreement that I circulated out to the commission at the end of last week. You can get my copy. The first document on the top, it actually has green and yellow, similar to about a month and a half ago, I provide you all a summary of the interlocal agreement that was discussed. We had, if you recall, back in April and May, had initially responded to the city of Port St. Joe's response. They had submitted an amended interlocal. At that time, we provided them a letter in response as it proposed, advancing those discussions. Then in early June, we all had a joint city and county workshop, if you all recall, over in EOC. During that discussion, the ten commissioners from the county and the city reviewed each of these original interlocals that are also in the packet, the third item in that, under that paperclip. And we ran over each one of those fifteen items in the interlocal agreement. Since then, I've met with the city attorney, Mr. Gibson. We've gone back and forth, we've addressed several of the issues and revised the interlocal agreement for both the consideration by the city and the county. The first document on that packet that you have in front of you summarizes the modifications made to each of those original interlocal agreements. Most notably, in the discussions from the EOC and the request of the county and the city, there's some additions to the new interlocal agreement if it's accepted as it's proposed. Most notably, the city of Port St. Joe would assume formal jurisdiction of the area of Oak Grove for its fire and emergency rescue. They'd also establish a water rescue program for the incorporated areas of Rimark Beach and the coastal areas around the sea of Port St. Joe. And then third, the city has indicated that in an amended interlocal, that they prepare a special warranty deed to convey the land on which the Welcome Center currently sits for the TDC over to the county with some additional provisions in there for reversionary clauses if it's never used for public purpose and also that they could then carve out a portion of that land to connect Fourth and Fifth Street in their future comprehensive plan and future city planning. I'll lead up to the chairman and the commission, if you all would like to, we can go over each one. I provided a summary to hopefully assist you in indicating which ones have been removed and which ones have been stayed in and which ones have been revised. But I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you have as well.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of months ago, in discussion, one of the city commissioners had got with me and said, "Look, let's try to start working together and let's put this interlocal at least to the point where it can benefit both the city and the county and let's move forward." And I think it's appropriate. Everything that we asked from the city, they did. Everything the city asked of us, we did. And so I think it's appropriate, and I won't make a motion yet because there may be further discussion, but I think it's appropriate to, for the betterment of the citizens of Port St. Joe and the citizens of the county to proceed with this and move forward. And let's get on to another issue.
Another discussion from the board.
I have a couple of minor issues that I would like to discuss with the attorney, not necessarily Bay, just a few small things. But one glaring issue to me is item number four, and that is regarding the water and sewer rates for the unincorporated area, which greatly affects District Three. And the folks in District Three are already struggling with their water and sewer rates as they currently are. My concern with this revised language is that it refers to rates for water and sewer services on systems existing as of this date. And my concern is the equality of the rates for the city residents and the unincorporated residents, that those would be equal going forward, even for folks coming on to the system in the future.
Sure. Just for the commission's benefit, and number four, I believe the commission's referring to is in the amended interlocal. The original language, as you commissioners recall from two months ago, it was probably the topic of most discussion during our joint workshop, which was number fifteen in your original interlocal that's in your packet. And I'll just read it. "The city shall assume ownership of all county water systems, including the debt, with the stipulation that non-city residents' recurring rates shall be the same as city residents' rates. However, the existing debt service for such systems shall be borne by the users of the respective system until paid in full in addition to the city's recurring rate. The city shall be entitled to receipt ownership of any system-related escrow funds for use in accordance with any bond requirements, where if otherwise appropriate for any other system-related expenditure at discretion of the city. The city shall receive all future debt service related to the system." That topic and that discussion point has gone back and forth between Mr. Gibson and myself and as well as the two commissions. As it currently stands, the response to fifteen and what we are currently at reads as follows. "The city acknowledges that a portion of the consideration for the transfer of the county water systems to the city ownership, which occur on June twenty-first, two thousand and eight, was an agreement that water rates be equal within the city limits and in the unincorporated service area. Rates for water and sewer services on systems existing as of the date of this agreement, parentheses, including the planned sewage collection system in Beacon Hill area, provided by the city in unincorporated areas, the county will be the same for city and county residents. This paragraph does not apply to any maintenance charges assessed for grinder pumps required in connection with the pressurized sewer lines." To the commissioner's point, they have established that going forward, that the city and the county for established areas would be the same. They'd also included in discussion with Mr. Gibson that the planned sewage collection systems for Beacon Hill after three eighty-six would also be included in this, which is a significant portion of future planning, if you will. There are areas that are conceivable or in future planning that are not included in this. So if it's not established under number four in the amended interlocal, it would not be encompassed in the existing or in the future Beacon Hill retention areas.
This is an issue for many of the folks in my district and I've been contacted by them regarding the water and sewer rates and the tap fees, which run about eight thousand for water and sewer tap fees. When the city, my understanding in discussion with Mr. Butler, the city acquired the water systems and as we have heard and what Mr. Novak has read, the folks that were using those water systems, even after the city acquired them, they paid the debt service until it was paid. And now, as the city upgrades its system, that cost is passed on to the folks who paid the debt service on their water system that the city acquired. And they are concerned about their protections going forward and we have quite a bit of land that does not have their water and sewer taps as of yet. So I'd be happy to talk more outside of the meeting with you, Mr. Novak, going forward, but that's going to be a big concern of mine in the amendment.
To Mr. Yeager's point, if provision number four in the amended interlocal is the only issue amongst this commission, I know the city brought it up last week, they had considerable discussion and it was tabled, they introduced some other issues. I've since talked with Mr. Gibson, I believe those issues hopefully have been resolved individually in his conversations with the commissioner from the city. Going forward, if number four is an area of concern, if there's a conditional approval amongst this commission that we can move forward, at least I can go back to the city and let them know that ninety-five percent of what we have accomplished, it is sound. We can focus on number four. If we have to come back with a revision on that particular paragraph, I can do that in two weeks, but just to give me some, a foundation to go forward and to keep working with Mr. Gibson.
Well, I do have just a couple of other comments that I'd like to make. In eliminating item eleven from the initial agreement, we eliminate the city's requirement to provide the funds to the chamber and the EDA, and that is a concern to me. They are required under this agreement to match the twenty thousand. Our chamber and our EDA, they rely on those funds to function at this time. I would like to see them become independent, but right now with the way that the economy is, they're not in a position to operate independently. These items are things that we agreed to, the city agreed to, and we performed under the agreement thus far, and I would expect the city to perform going forward. The other issue is the sports complex. Now, we may never build a sports complex. The interlocal agreement does not require us to build a sports complex, but what it does have is a requirement that if it is built, that the city will participate up to six hundred thousand dollars. Now, that land was donated to the city by the St. Joe Company for this purpose, so they got the land free. Now, the revision just says the city and county will cooperate in the joint development, so it really doesn't say anything. That's a concern of mine. And again, the way it's written originally, there's no requirement to build, but if we build, they're on the hook for up to six hundred thousand, matching what the county I do have a little concern with item nine on the revision, and this is just something that I'd like to mention. This is a waiver of the water and sewer tap fees for future designated affordable housing areas, and I understand that, but it's pushing it to the sales transaction date of the first sale. So I'm just wondering if the city has thought this through. This pushes the, what is now approximately eight thousand, we don't know what it's going to be in the future. This is something that I assume would be collected at closing, so the city would have to administer collecting those impact fees at closing. But it's also, and Commissioner Smiley, you may want to think about this, this is pushing that eight thousand to the buyer, off of the developer and to the buyer. Now, when the developer pays it, obviously, they incorporate it into the price of a home, but I just don't know if this has been fully thought through.
Just a little comment there. On number four, I don't have an issue with less kind of taking that aside and letting the attorney work with their attorney and see if we can't get a better language that Commissioner Bryan is speaking of. Some of the others, you know, I think working together with the city, there's a commitment there. They've made a commitment, they did things over and beyond, which we had an agreement that, on the TDC building specifically, and they changed that agreement. They changed it to favor Gulf County. They're deeding us that property, so they've made some concessions too. I think this is a good document. I don't have an issue with number four because I want to make sure our residents do, but let me ask you one question on number four too. There's no requirement from a developer to hook up to that. I mean, they can do a package system on the issue. So if the fees are too high, then a developer or a homeowner association could actually do their own package plan or...
And that's part of the discussion too, is that a deterrent in the future? And that's part of the discussion is going forward, if the costs are so unfavorable to future development, that it could be used as a deterrent and, you know, discourage someone from actually going ahead and developing. So it is a consideration. And like I said, Beacon Hill, you're talking about concessions, the TDC property, the Oak Grove, the water rescue. I think the language originally was not, did not encompass Beacon Hill. It does now. So they're moving, as we are, on number four. With regards to the sports complex, I just wanted to touch on that. The six hundred thousand dollars is that the city decides to move forward, the county then, the city shall match, but the ultimate trigger is the city moving forward on the sports complex. If, go ahead.
But they would match the county, so it's no requirement on the county to move forward.
Correct, but it would be initiated by the city. So if the city in its projected plan knows that if the county stepped up with over a half a million dollars for the project, that they'd be obligated as well. It kind of controls that issue, so removing that dollar allocation ideally may facilitate that discussion earlier in terms of scaling back the project. Right now, if they start the project and they have to put six hundred thousand dollars to match the county under the interlocal, it may put the project down the line. And I think some of the city commissioners possibly had some discussions about that in their meeting as well as that workshop.
Let me try to move this forward. I agree, we need to, you need to take a look at number four and I'd love for chairman to go back to their attorney and let's see if we can't relieve our concerns with that. So with that, I'll make a motion to pass this document except for number four and let the attorneys work with number four and come back with us on number four and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
I'll second Mr. Yeager's motion.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed?
I'm opposed.
One opposed. Motion carries four to one.
Commissioners, I will work with Mr. Gibson and ideally come back to you all at your next meeting with regards to number four and a final document.
Mr. Chairman, may I just a moment for this? Sorry, just for clarification, the land was donated and I think this has already been discussed. If we do not move on this, the city of Port St. Joe does not, do they retain the land or does it revert back to the landowner? Is there any clause in there?
I haven't seen, we haven't worked up a proposed deed, but the initial discussion is that it would be conveyed over to the county for the purposes of the Welcome Center and used for county business going forward. If it was ever not used for that, it would revert back to the city's ownership.
Mr. McDaniel, were you requiring about the sports complex or the TDC building?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's been a couple of months that we looked at that, but I do believe in that deed from St. Joe Company to the city that it would be used specifically for that purpose. And I think there was a reversionary clause. I'll have to go back and double check. If it wasn't used for those purposes, then it would revert back at some point down the Next issue I have, at the last meeting, there was some discussion with regards to Veterans Park and the sign out there and the code violation. In part of that discussion, there was also, over the last three months, a discussion with regards to the access on Lighthouse Keepers Drive. I've received some inquiries from the public and an actual counsel that represents some of the folks on that issue as well, specifically with regards to the right-of-way agreement from thirteen years ago. I'd like permission from the county commission to move forward in drafting a potential use for access back to those properties and that facility. It wasn't recorded at the time that we have that right-of-way agreement. It was an agreement between the parties, but to eliminate any cloud over any title with regards to the properties back there, there is that right-of-way that cuts through the county park. In the past agreement, there was an obligation to put maintenance on that, on the private business owner. As we've gone forward in discussion, Mr. Butler, we need to remove that cloud, if you will, for those property owners that have bought back there as well as that assisted living facility. And I'd like to come back to you all in two weeks with a... And I'd like to come back to you all in two weeks with a proposed easement across that right-of-way, through Lighthouse Keepers Drive, through the county park, for access back to those properties to remove any of that cloud going forward. And I have these questions, but also ask for your permission to do so.
I believe that the concerns of the attorney representing some of the folks out there is not that there's a cloud on title currently, but that if they, if an agreement was entered into and it was recorded, that it could create a cloud on title. And I believe that originally that access easement was entered into prior to the roads in Beacon by the Sea being adopted by the county, it was during the development phase. And I think that once those roads in Beacon by the Sea were adopted by the county, which is my understanding that they were, so they are currently county roads, that that would include that small piece of access that traverses through the edge of the park, which is a county road, and I don't think there's ever a need for an easement for the public to traverse the county road. So, I would ask for you to reexamine that issue and maybe just talk with Mr. Costin about his concerns about the cloud on title.
Charles represents some folks out there, and he addressed the letter. I'll just read his concern, it says, "My concern is that such a document would create a cloud on the title as it would disclose a county right-of-way that is not perpetual like other county owned rights ways." That's one issue. The other issue is with regards to the maintenance. So, if we can, we'll craft the document and provide it to you all for approval that one, addresses the access, and two, with regard to perpetual maintenance of that. The document that was done thirteen years ago contradicts our standing policy, which is we will maintain our county roads. This agreement, right-of-way agreement, actually indicated it would not fall to the county to maintain it, and that is obviously a concern to Mr. Schrader and as well as those property owners back there as well. So, to eliminate any confusion going forward, I would like to come back to you all with that, and I'll talk with Charles as well over the next two weeks to clear it up. Any objection? I move forward.
Please.
Okay. The next item I have, two weeks ago, I reported to the commission that the lawsuit against the county had been successfully defended and was ultimately dismissed. I touched on it, and I think in the last two weeks, some of the commissioners have been asked in the community with regards to lawsuit, as well as some of the discussion in the community. I just wanted to take a minute and actually address the procedural steps that have been followed. It was indicated that the ultimate matter was withdrawn, and I just wanted to recite for the commission, the questions that have been asked of the commissioners in the community over the last thirteen days, as well as anybody that is still outstanding unsure of how that progressed. Just taking you all back, back on April nineteenth, the county was sued in federal court. It was entered before Judge Smoak in the federal district court. The county commission, as well as three named individual commissioners, were named in the lawsuit. Immediately after that, we engaged our insurance defense firm, it was ultimately distributed to the two defense firms, one that represented both the commissioners individually, and another firm, due to conflicts of interest, represented the commission as a whole. Shortly thereafter, within a month, motions to dismiss were filed against those lawsuits, filed against the commissioners and the board of county commissioners. As we approached the deadline for the responses to those motions to dismiss filed by both the firms on behalf of the county, the plaintiff's counsel, Ms. Mary Maddox, had the opportunity in a request for cooperation with both defendants for relief to amend her complaint. The court and the parties all granted her that additional time, and she received an extension. On June twentieth, the judge entered the order to extend the time for her to amend the complaint, both against the individual commissioners, as well as the commission as a whole. After that, a mandate complaint had been filed by Ms. Maddox against the county, the defendants, both the commission and the individual commissioners, filed once again a motions to dismiss, and they were filed with Judge Smoak's chambers, and again, the clock started under the federal rules of civil procedure for Ms. Maddox to file a response to those motions to dismiss. That month transpired, and at the end of that month, again, there was a request for an extension of time. That was granted, the judge Smoak issued an action order requiring a response, a timely response. On July thirty-first, there was a discussion between the parties with regards to the deadline that was coming up. The deadline was August sixth. The commission had filed their motions to dismiss, as well as the individual commissioners. At that time, the plaintiff's counsel had the opportunity to either file opposition to those motions, and the alternative, there was a discussion between the parties that the matter would be dismissed with prejudice, both against the commissioners individually and the board of county commissioners. On August sixth, those stipulations were submitted to the court, and the clerk for the federal district court entered those orders dismissing the case against both the commissioners and as well as the board of county commissioners. So, if there's questions of the commission individually, the folks have come to you, your constituents, as well as the questions of myself, I wanted to explain the procedural steps that took place over those three months on how we arrived to where we're at. We've received public records requests for the fees, and we'll provide those to those folks as well. Is there any questions with regards to procedural steps on the lawsuit?
No, I think basically what you're saying is the, it was dismissed and not withdrawn.
That's correct, Commissioner, and it's done with prejudice, which means those actions will not come back in federal court versus without prejudice. That's all I have for this time.
But you, I gave you a packet, first sheet of the packet is delivered from the city of Saint Joe. There's actually four items in this packet, and the first one would be, if you're giving a little time on the passage sale tax, landfill tipping fees, been a lot of discussion the last few days, and I'm afraid, some talking about, didn't know what they were talking about. This page is, this is the first letter here, is written March twenty-sixth, two thousand nine, City of Saint Joe signed by Mayor Madison. And what he's asking for in this letter is, the county commission considers not making them pay tipping fees till the first day of October, two thousand nine. There were discussions during our budget time, but landfill costing, we're trying to get somebody to pay for the landfill. So, as I go through these all in chronological order, I've highlighted, there's a lot more information here, I'm going to bring up, I've highlighted the highlights, and I'll answer any kind of question you may have, and it'll be a good thing. The second page is actually, you see, May twenty-eighth, two thousand nine, has a budget review where I provided, provided a couple of presentations with the board, maybe several options, I'm going to copy down a couple of these options here. One of those is related to local burden infrastructure surtax, and the second option was related to additional high percent small county surtax. And that's, that was a recommendation came from, from the board of the community, and I presented to you, by the way. Next page is a six-nine, two thousand nine, where county attorney McFarland discussed proposed small county surtax, had been instituted for advertising, that's in June of two thousand nine. These next two pages are two pages I took in for books. The first book here, two thousand seven book, the second book is two thousand twelve, I've highlighted those dates. You see, the point of this is, going down the first page, Gulf County imposed already a half percent surtax, January first, two thousand six, and it would be in place until repealed, and that was for the hospital, for the injured care at the hospital. So, we first started collecting tax, January first, two thousand six. The second page shows where that tax actually ended, so to speak, last year December, two thousand nine, where it was picked up, January first, two thousand ten, and the high cent hospital, or surtax, and the high cent tax, we, the board voted, with a super majority on the vote, the landfill purposes to help pay for landfill. Two pages I, I took in for books, say where you imposed money in two thousand six, where you imposed it again in two thousand ten, which you already never had sent, or this board did. The next page, dated June, or July fourteen, two thousand nine, is actually a copy of the ordinance, ordinance two thousand nine, oh six seven, and what this ordinance was, it was a repeal of provisions of Gulf County ordinance oh five fourteen, was imposed the injuries care, high percent, surtax, and it enacted the one percent, which included the hospital and the landfill. The next page, I've highlighted the use of the proceeds, and the one percent tax, that was imposed the first day, the first day of January, two thousand ten. One high percent tax proceeds and any interest accrued should be expended for the purposes of paying the cost of operations and healthcare services for the counties uninsured, underinsured and injured populations. Next sentence, one high percent tax proceeds and any interest accrued by the, should be expended for the purposes of providing perpetual planning for operations and services of all Gulf County infrastructure, that's your landfill money. High percent went to the hospital, high percent went to the landfill. First by the rules, the landfill money was collected first through January, two thousand ten, and we've highlighted environment ordinance to that date, January one, two thousand ten. The next page shows you, June twenty-second, two thousand nine, a combined workshop between the county and the city, and the current commissioners that represent the city of Saint Joe is Mayor Madison, the vice president, the county commissioners, that are here now, Ron Jaeger, Carmine McElmore. In this discussion, at that meeting, if you're throwing over page two, page three, page four, when we got to the one half cent surtax discussion. Chief of administration, we discussed the high cent surtax ordinance adoption by the board of county commissioners, stating that the funds collected in the unincorporated areas of the county, not the cities, would go towards the landfill budget and reduce the amount from adware on taxes. Commissioner Jaeger discussed that everyone shares in the cost of the surtax, upon inquiry by our city commissioner Reeves, county attorney McFarland, discussed the first high cent had been placed to the hospital, and now the board has adopted the second high cent, stating that the cities cannot come to an, if the cities cannot come to an agreement, though the former risk is used to designate the amount everyone receives by the department revenue, everyone receives, that's the county, city, rural, county, city of Saint Joe. If we can't come together and we can't agree on an interlocal agreement, how we break the money up, state authorities are in determining the formula of how to break the money up. And it's roughly, the city of Saint Joe gets twenty-one percent of the money, city rural gets about twelve percent of the money, Gulf County gets rushed to the money. So, and really going through this process, where we're trying to encourage most cities to allow their high cent surtax to go towards landfill. The next highlighted is on tip and taste, and at the bottom of that paragraph, Commissioner Jaeger discussed the possibility of the city placing their surtax to the landfill. And that was in our meeting, with the city. A couple pages over, the next highlighted one high cent surtax on June twenty-one, oh nine, upon inquiry by Commissioner Jaeger, Butler reported he had not received an interlocal agreement with the city of Saint Joe regarding that one high cent surtax, only a verbal agreement, and the city rural will be based upon the amount of surtax they receive, stating they might commit in defense. Commissioner Jaeger motioned to reduce adware on taxes in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the funds received from the city of Saint Joe and rural for one high cent surtax revenue effective October first, two thousand nine, or pay tipping fees at the landfill in the amount thirty-five dollars per ton. Next highlighted, of course, from Commissioner Jaeger, reported that agreement would for the cities to commit the surtax or pay the tipping fees effective October first, two thousand nine. Next page, from your minutes, October thirteen, two thousand nine, I've highlighted concern agenda, page one, page two, at the bottom, page three, interlocal agreement, local discussion is the surtax, city of Saint Joe and city rural, and all that is shown is, in the concern agenda for that date, there is a proposed agreement. The next page, where I've highlighted the interlocal agreement between the county and the city, and this is nearly the one percent. We had a one agreement in two thousand six for the high percent, and now we're at one percent, stated January first, two thousand ten. The first highlight, where Gulf County board commissioners have duly passed Gulf County ordinance oh nine, oh seven, authorized an acquisition of discretionary one cents small county surtax pursuant to authority granted by statute. Next highlighted is where as the county and cities decide to provide for the establishment of a health care trust fund to be maintained by Gulf County clerk of court, which will be sufficient to operate a consortium of health care facilities and programs established as set forth herein, and where as the county and cities decide to provide for distribution on the remainder of the tax revenues, achieve herein percent of that certain distribution fund currently set forth in statute. So, in this agreement, we have an interlocal agreement, this says all the first high cent will come in to the clerk of court, clerk of court will handle that money, it will wind up as in the trust fund, the health care trust fund. The second part is the other high cent will go according to your distribution formula that is set forth by the state of Florida. So, I bore you with a rest, I've highlighted some of it, it says the same thing over and over and over. So, the discussion the last several days, and I've heard a lot of it, is, city of Saint Joe is paying double for landfill. Our agreement early on, before two thousand ten and two thousand nine, was for, we received from the board of the county commission to get the high cent surtax to help offset adware on tax. The county commissioners talked about amount of money away from adware on, reduced adware on the wrong amount. The cities chose to pay tipping fee in lieu of us dealing that high cent. And to give you an idea, this is rough numbers. The city of Saint Joe last year paid about sixty thousand dollars in tipping fees. It's sixty, sixty thousand dollars, rough numbers, and the city of Saint Joe collected more than double, that amount of money, rough numbers, last year. So, so, our intent early on was for the cities to turn the money over to the county and no one have to pay a tipping fee, not no one, if the city were to go to the landfill and not have to pay a tipping fee. If Don Butler from the base goes to the landfill, he got to pay a tipping fee, or Joe Butler lives on Jefferson Avenue, goes to the landfill, he had to pay a tipping fee. But this was, I think some people, I forgot, but there was an agreement a few, not two years ago, two thousand ten, where the city of Saint Joe would pay tipping fees instead of giving the money, we're making about seventy-five thousand dollars a year off of this tax. So, I just want to say it, there's been a lot of discussion, there've been a bunch of phone calls, and I understand from the newspaper and all much, but...
Let me just add to that, Don, I had a call from one of the city commissioners, and I had to give him my history too, but Pat Hardman knows this, I've always said, we have got to look for alternative sources of revenue to figure out how we can reduce the property taxpayer paying for everything. At that time, when I first come back on the board, we didn't even charge a tipping. We were the only county in the state of Florida that didn't charge a tipping fee. Walton County imposes either a half or a full cent to pay for a tipping fee in landfill. So, there's different ways to do it, but we were looking for alternative sources. We offered that to the city, they chose to pay tipping fees, which was good for them, and that was fine. However, I think at the end of the day, all of our taxpayers, our taxpayers live in the cities, and you know, all of our taxpayers would benefit, because we reduced, and we made sure that this was a commitment, we reduced the adware on taxpayer, whatever that tax was, that went directly to pay the landfill fees, and that's worked. I don't know if we need to extend that offer back to the city to say, look, it's, we're having to go up on tipping fees, if you would like now, to go back to that agreement and say, look, we'd rather pay the, what we collect in the sales tax, and we'll put that in the revenue side, and help us a little bit, but I don't know if we need to extend that back forth to them or not.
My recommendation would be that, maybe stand back to them. Also, my recommendation would be for you, you made a conscious decision to charge less at the tipping fee than what cost us from that landfill.
Right.
And you, when you did it, you knew you were losing money when you did it.
The adware on taxpayer was going to pay the difference.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, listening to this and reading up on it, let me make a comment or two on this. When it was broken down in the city, I think at that time, Mr. Who was the city manager at that time? Mr. Weston. They ran the numbers and saw where they could make a profit off this high cent. As the man plainly stated, Mr. Booker, if the city of Saint Joe, you have to, through the Florida statutes and all, you have to distribute any tax money with your municipalities, in which this case, we were Hitchcock, I use that word, they were roughly twelve percent, and they rarely used the landfill, they disposed their land and debris, they have a disposal system there that they use in any light products, washing machines and so, they have people come and get them and sell them. So, anyway, they elected to take the money. For the city of Saint Joe, what it was basically said, and where it will clear this up, I don't think, and no disrespect to the city fathers, but I don't think they give you, what was it, Paul Harvey said, and the rest of the story, I think they don't give their people in the city the full story on this. Everything would have been free had they committed this half cent to the county to help reduce their taxes and ours a little bit offset them. But they saw that there was a profit here. Okay, on top of that, and again, I'm gonna compare it to the people in the municipalities that ain't here, the city of Weewell Hitchcock does not charge any fee to pick up the debris, rims, nothing. Their only requirement is you have it in the size that they can physically pick it up, they use inmate. It's my understanding, the city of St. Joe, if you have over a certain amount, then they bill you on your water bill. I don't know that, I don't feel water bill on St. Joe. If that's the case, they're collecting more. So we're talking about the people, uh, in the city paying twice, they are. And that's going into their coffers. So this came about and I read that where, in our budget to try to, we, and I'm over the budget committee, to try to go out and seek sources of revenue, and this is one of the things. We're losing, the county is losing money on the landfill and the city of Port St. Joe is making money. Uh, this here, alright. Bottom line, I'll be quiet here. We're changing the menu. The pasta hamburgers are burning up and they won't eat off the old menu, but we're coming out with a new menu of what, sixty dollars per ton? Even at that, they will still be making a profit. The city of Port St. Joe will still be making a profit and the county of Gulf County will still be losing money because we keep the tipping fee so long. You need to know that.
He didn't know that.
No disrespect to the city, the people, or as I say, all the city fathers, but this is, this is just facts and you need to know it.
So, so Mr. Butler, what we're saying, I just want to make sure everybody understands. If the city were to wind ho- wind, wind ahead and turn over that half cent sales type that they were receiving, they will be able to put their disposable tools on the side of the road like always and have them picked up?
Yeah, the city trucks could dump the landfill at no cost, no cost.
So right now, if they just use, for instance, uh, how the year ago, I seen an older gentleman trying to load a sofa up to take out to the landfill. If they would have went on and put that money towards the landfill like it should have been going, that gentleman wouldn't have to get out there and try to pick up that sofa. So in other words, the city citizens are being hit twice again.
Yeah, I think to move it forward, there is probably a lot more discussion, but to move it forward, I think we should make that offer back to the city of Port St. Joe. Look, if you want to commit your half cent, you, you can dump for, at the landfill, nothing. It would probably come out of wash or close to it, I don't know, Joe probably knows better than that, but, um. Ms. Jaeger, do you need to put that?
Well, let's have more discussion, I, I think there's still some.
Let me just say one thing, cause it came to the vote review committee, we were trapped because we had a deal. And, and, and at the end of the day, Don, I discussed this, uh, when the city manager came, we couldn't argue with him, with him because he was leaving money on the table. I mean, it was a simple deal. We thought it was gonna generate about eighty thousand when they did it. I think it's generated a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So, at that time, at the lower tipping fee, they were only paying like forty-four or something like that a year. So they, I mean, it would be foolish not to have done. So I mean, they chose, that made us mad because we were, we were at the stage of adopting in the local when they decided they didn't want to do it. And then when they backed out, the city, we won't back down. So the, altogether, we lost about two hundred thousand dollars.
When that, when that city manager made that decision, he put the weight back on the citizens of St. Joe. But basically, the citizens of St. Joe were in his best interest.
The, the half cent sales tax, the half cent that we're talking about, uh, yes, it went back there. We were all paid it in account of half cent sales tax to go towards this, everybody was. But they saw opportunity and it's, it's good business, it's, it's business. Why give you a hundred and twenty thousand when I don't have to give you but sixty? So it, it was a good business still from them. All I'm saying is this, we are gonna raise these tipping fees, they could ha- they could turn it back and then they wouldn't have to charge anybody to pick up. But they, they're making a hundred, uh, sixty, six number of dollars off the half cent, plus then they're turning to their, uh, citizens and charging them, I, my understanding. And over a certain, a little maybe a wheelbarrow or lager, you get charged a fee, so. Citizens of Port St. Joe are really getting hit twice, and it has nothing to do with the county.
Don, would it be your, your recommendation to go back and offer them that, uh, that same deal as we offered them?
That would be my recommendation. And two, my recommendation would be to, to consider, look at your tipping fee and get it more in line, what it costs for running a landfill.
Yeah, yeah, it, it. The landfill right now costs what, a hundred and ten dollars?
Well, it's, Joe can tell you what the number is, but it's expensive, it's expensive to run the landfill.
Roughly about a hundred and ten dollars, Mr. Joe?
Oh, sir.
What is it? Uh, oh, come on.
For what, for what is charged that comes in the landfill? If you received a hundred and forty dollars a ton for everything that was charged, you could pay for the landfill. But nobody's gonna pay you a hundred and forty dollars a ton. They're gonna throw it in the ditch, they're gonna throw it on the side of the road, they're gonna sit it out in the yard and burn it. Nobody's gonna pay a hundred and forty dollars a ton. So you need to deal with reality versus ideality.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
And I know it's got voted down, but if you go to mandatory garbage pickup and, and let that whoever bids on that in, include debris pickup, uh, then you're gonna do away with a lot of problems and you're gonna, you, you, at the end of the day, you're probably gonna save the taxpayer money because if you go to mandatory, they're gonna, it's gonna be a cheaper price for everybody.
And, and you and I have talked about that.
You have, you, you and I agree on that, Joe, there is no question about it. So, you know, I think at the end of the day, we've got a budget meeting tonight, I, I, I assume that we can still discuss that type of thing, but that would be something that, that would be good for the public, it would be good for our budget, and it's the right thing to do. Hey, then nobody throws it in the woods because they, it's, it's.
And it eases it off the taxpayers' back.
That's right.
So it, it costs us, I wanna get back to this point I'm trying to fix right here, I'm trying to fix this up, dress it up pretty good. It costs the county a hundred and forty dollars to take it in.
A hundred and forty dollars a ton to take it in.
So how much do we charge the city for bringing it to us?
We charge the city, uh, forty dollars a ton right now.
Right now, we moved up to sixty, though it'll be sixty October first. So actually, the county is still putting in eighty dollars a ton on that with the city?
Yes.
Make another comment, it's pretty cheap for the local citizens, even with the tipping fee. I mean, I went out there this weekend and dumped a, a couple of things and, and, and it cost me five bucks.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's still a, a bargain for the local citizens, but this is a way that, that, you know, I think it'd be good for the county.
The, the ones that will get hit hardest are your businesses that have no choice. When, when it comes to a business, throwing his garbage out by the side of the road, it starts to become a felony then. It is different for you and I, we take our stuff and throw it on, uh, neighbor Bob's property while he's not there, and it.
We don't do that.
No, no, we don't do it. But, uh, when it comes to a business, it's gonna become a felony. And, uh, I, I don't think all of our businessmen would love to be in shackles.
But Mr. Butler, I like, like Mr. Jaeger said, I would like for you to present that back to the city and see can we reach in and help some of the city.
You need a motion to that, Don?
Yeah, it's ready, Butler.
Some move to present that back to the city of Port St. Joe. And, and my understanding was, I thought the, the city of Weewall was still involved, did I hear somebody say that they were paying?
They're just saying, I want to say they're saying, Joe. I mean, they like, they, they don't use landfill too often.
Okay.
I think they're using the landfill every city of Port St. Joe.
Okay. Uh, and we need to make that offer to both of them, I'd, yes, the city of Weewall probably not gonna get back in it, they're making a little money off of it anyway, because they're not using the landfill, but at any rate, let's just offer it to the cities, and that's my motion.
I got a motion by Mr. Jaeger. And I get a second, I got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? I have any opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, I quick, on, uh, uh, I may be wrong, but, uh, on this, uh, where we voted to, uh, pursuing mandatory garbage, um, damn it, if I'm wrong, correct me, I think that was in a, uh, budget meeting where we, uh, that came about and not at the pool board. Right there, I'm just, I don't have my notes on that with me.
I think it was a special meeting that was noticed for it.
Okay, I know you were.
I was going with that.
Yeah, okay, alright, we can amend.
Which in, in that same bracket, the, the page titled Bridges. And after all this, there's a specification for three bridges. And the board already agreed to somewhat move forward. And one of these bridges is on Old State Road, what we call Southus Creek. And specs on this, this would be, this gives a fifty foot approach to each of those bridges, or to fix it, like it should be fixed. Also, um, the next of specs is for the, um, the Bosch cover on the west side of the raw bar on thirty A on the east end. And, and, and the third one is to bridge Tomville Creek on South Diana. And we have a point now of advertising this and trying to solicit quotes or bids for these two bridges. Uh, the money is intended to come from secondary river bridge. And if the board does their best, then the intent would be, my recommendation would be to take it out of the secondary river bridge fund and amend the budget to pay for it, but we have the point of advertising.
Yeah, some move to advertise, Don, the board's already agreed to the projects, several of them, I think, one of them's probably in Commissioner Brian's district, one of them's in my district, one of them's. One's in my. One's in yours. And, uh, it, it, it's, and it's a need, I think Harry Paul's in the, in the audience, Harry would say that when you hit that, i- i- and Harry, I don't know if he pulls a bow, but when you hit that one, uh, coming into the raw bar, it's substantial, so they, they need to be fixed, that's.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed, I don't have no opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, next item is titled Radio. And the chair walked out at the time. He and I have been discussing the, uh, radio system, uh, lack of a good radio system. County doesn't have enough money to pretty and write, what would be IBLA good functioning radio system, law enforcement, EMS, and fire caduce. We've been talking with Williams Communications, and, and they gave a quote on what they could, they could make some repairs to our existing system. We have a four hundred megahertz system, at one time, we, we, um, we're streaming with eight hundred megahertz system, very expensive, county commission could not afford it, didn't really work well either. But, um, this is not the best radio system that could go in, but whatever I'm putting front of the board is, we have twenty fifteen million dollars in surcharges for money in the budget. If the board would allow for us to get quotes, but my board policy to get quotes, and I see one here is under ten thousand dollars, but hopefully we may be able to get another quote under this amount. But if we can get quotes and move forward, we're making a repair to the radio system. Um, if the board could person then, then agree to that. Uh, I talked with the chair about it, and this is, with my lack of money, this is probably the best thing we can do. It looks like it's gonna cost, you know, eight to ten thousand dollar range, so we're running the budget to do it.
I, I think it's imperative that they be able to communicate, um, for everyone's safety.
Want a motion to proceed?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I got a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Jaeger. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed, no opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, next item, there was special districts. And nothing to, nothing I'm asking the board on today, but maybe in two weeks. We have a couple of, your special districts in this county, the high control districts, the Dead Lake Water Management, uh, district, the, um, Highland Water and Sewer District. All those were enacted by the legislature many years ago. Highland Water and Sewer District does not even one penny worth of value in that system anymore. But we're still out there, every year we have to deal with it, we have to turn paperwork into the state on it. We have to pay H P, I think it's like a seventy-five dollar fee, yes, to keep that district up and going. And, and the other one is in Dead Lakes, uh, Water Management District. At one point in time, at the dam, what we call the dam, they just go down, they're at the bridge, and it controlled the water in Dead Lakes. But every year, we have to maintain paperwork, we have to send state phone money, D money, uh, to continue with that, uh, Dead Lakes Water Management District. So, the one, the number one there would be Highland Water and Sewer District, that needs to go away. And it's gonna be able to enter in legislative session, next session, but we'll get rid of some special districts that are no longer needed. My recommendation here, maybe in two weeks, you have time to, especially Dead Lakes. If there's some, something I don't know about this, some desire to continue with Dead Lakes, control the water flow in Dead Lakes, um, I really doubt you ever can be able to put it down back into Dead Lakes like we're doing in the sixties, but, um, anyway. Maybe in a couple of weeks, the board can say, yes, let's add these two special districts to the list to be, to be removed. Save a little bit of money and save us a lot of paperwork. Mr. Chairman, next item, uh, do a health insurance. Um, in the past, county attorney has been on the county's health insurance. Uh, my recommendation to the county commission is to allow the county attorney to be on the county's group policy, have the town constitution ready, since the county employees.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed, no opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mine, next and last item, uh, have a couple of late conversations. I back up, and she, and I had, had a conversation with Bill Williams on the sign at Beacon Hill, and it was directed by the board last week. And continued the discussion, uh, last night, a couple of, a little late conversations with Mr. Williams. Um, he told me he would send a letter to me, I received a letter, I see he already sent it at nine fifteen, I received it about nine thirty-one, actually it's me, it started this morning. And this letter said, Mr. Butler, we see a tax letter regarding the location of the sign. Please provide to the chairman at today's meeting. And all I could do was email it to you when I got it, so the chairman's got it on his email. But what the letter says is, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen, dear Mr. Chairman, late to my cooperative agreement, to develop a plan and review the best use of a sign located on Highway ninety-eight at Beacon Hill Park entrance. I have discussed with Mr. Butler and TNC. And we're probably not, uh, TNC, the potential advertising opportunity as well as the means of community. Having decided it was the best interest of all parties to not move forward with the TNC and consider relocating the sign to a more appropriate venue. But the board agrees that it's the best interest of all parties to relocate the sign. I respectfully request the county's assistant who will move the sign and transfer it to a designated location or to public works until a more desirable location can be arranged. How very appreciative of the board's recognition of the personal copyrights and due process in this matter. It has always been my goal to work together in a respectful manner to find a resolve that is in the best interests of all parties. I look forward to hearing your opinion in a timely manner, sincerely, Bill Williams.
Let's put that one to bed.
Yeah, I have a motion in order, Mr. Chairman. I put the motion on the floor that we accept, uh, the question. And that would include public works taking the sign down and somewhere, dropping the pot off in the public works yard, so he can pick it up later.
Alright, I'll, I'll second for discussion. Where would you take it to, Joe, to the yard?
I'd bring it to the yard, but who's gonna pay for it?
Well, it'd be the, it'd be the county, that's what I'm asking.
How big's the county should pay for it?
We're moving it.
Uh, absolutely.
I, I agree, it is personal property and we typically would not pay to move someone's personal property.
It's got a foundation.
And a motion.
Not sure if part of your yard or two concrete, one little ground level that allow it to be removed. So, at the same time, after the sign is moved, we probably need to, uh, excavate some of that little ground level, jackhammer off, leave it out the right way, or at least get the, what do you say, off the right way.
Yeah, I think in the past, when we've done things for, for folks that's had a fire or something, you know, what we did, we, we didn't necessarily charge them, but we leaned something.
Well, well, I'm just really.
If they sell something, if they sell something, and, and we make and sell the sign, I don't know what it's worth.
But it's not really a situation when someone has a fire at their home or, I, I think maybe we just might want to consider giving him, uh, enough time to have it removed.
Well, we started here at this last meeting and told this room up about that sign. Now we got permission to take the sign out, now we ain't gonna take it down? It's four boats holding the sign, four boats.
Let me, let me, Chairman, we have a motion in second, move it to the floor. To move it, take it down, move to the third.
What's your motion?
Motion was that we accept, miss, uh, I mean, get through it, the motion was that we accept this letter that, uh, uh, Mr. Williams, uh, has, uh, presented to this board.
I got a motion by Mr.
There were, were some stipulations in there. That we send Mr. Williams through the proper channels, notification that we accept it and give him, we'll say, ten days to remove it. If not, we will remove the sign, we will hold it for X number days, and if he comes and claims it, he will pay the cost to the county, if not, then it becomes ours and we'll sell it for scrap or whatever we need to. And that gets everybody off of the hook.
Got a motion on the floor by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. McElmore, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
There's right ways, wrong ways to go about things, you need to understand.
Listen, I understand. State law now says all county commissioners are competition option about four hours on every stream every year. The next available class I know of is coming in Daytona, starting November. I talked with Commissioner McElmore this morning, um, looking for a closer location. Uh, hopefully there will be some other locations that I have to somewhere else, but we find out where those are, we're letting you know the, the next one we know of is in December, September, and Daytona.
That's a fact function, function too, so any staff that goes or any commissioner that goes need to make sure that. That's a fact function, function too, so any staff that goes, or any commissioner that goes, need to make sure that they get that class during that fact function, so you, I mean, it won't cost you any more than what you go to that fact function for anyway.
That's all I know.
Mr. Chairman, the first on the agenda from the public is Bill Corran, Americas Avenue ditch. Good morning, Bill Corran, uh, Cortez, not Americas Avenue ditch, I don't live in the ditch yet, but Cortez and Americas there, I'm gonna refresh your memory. My other house over there on Ponce de León's flooded out twice, the, the second time in the last eight years due to some county work back there on the ditch. Oh, I forgot, um. On the first page, it shows you what proper grading has been done. Someone obviously knows how to do the grading. I don't know if this was done during the contractor's time period back there, or if it was done by the county after which, okay? On the second page, there's some examples of some bad work, obviously left by the contractor. The center of the block filled with water over a foot deep before it ran over the dirt pile there in picture one, and came down to the planned exit pipe. Okay? All right, then it, you know, flooded, it flooded the whole center of the block, it filled up like a pond. Then, in item two, you see that stake with the, uh, brown mark on it, that's twenty inches, twenty inches out of grade, that that water had to build up before it could flow down to the pipe. And then on the number three, over there on the corner, Cortez, what has a picture of the drainpipe. The yard was over a foot deep, the lot next door became a pond. That grate is twenty-six inches higher than the ditch, as you can see with the ruler there, and the, the, again, the stake going back up the street. This is a one point two million dollar ditch. Then another quarter of a million dollars has been spent repairing it, over a hundred and forty repairs to that project after the fact. Uh, the taxpayers of this county deserved an explanation. Now, Mr. Butler stated he will not answer the questions that I brought up last meeting. And I agree, they're easy to look up at the clerk of the court's office, but the how and the why is only known to the county and their staff. Those are the ones that'll have to answer those commission, those answers from the commission. I am again answering, asking for answers for the misuse of taxpayers' money. This is tremendous waste and mismanaged construction job. We must consider the how and why so that doesn't continue to happen. You're trying to save money in this county, but you don't address the issues where the money is wasted. So, I will continue to come to this meeting and bring in more information. There's more to this, but I hope the county would step up and tell the taxpayers, this is what's been done, this is what we need to look out for in the future. So, uh, again, I'll come back and keep asking for the answers to these questions.
And I, I have one question I'd like to ask you, sir, if you don't mind. You live out in Saint Joe Beach area, in this area, right in here?
I do now, yes.
Have you contacted your commissioner, District Three, and you see she, and has she answered any of your questions?
No, she's waiting for, well, I have contacted her, and she did send out some help, as you can see, that was a county grad all that dug that ditch after I went out there in a rainstorm and dug a ditch. Uh, I get county and shows too.
So, she has not answered your questions, then, that you would like-
She's compiling information, she's waiting for, to refresh your memory, uh, you and Commissioner Jaeger were the only two commissioners at that time, the, the three here knew, so you two were involved in the project, she was not. So, maybe she should ask you for the answers.
No, sir, maybe, maybe she is representing you now, she will be for the next three years, four years, and she should, if she don't know the answers, she should go search and find you an answer, and get back to you.
Okay, well, I, I was told the procedure here is I was to address-
If, if she cannot-
Commissioner Smiley, not the board individually.
If she cannot answer your question, then you have all, you have all the rights in the world to come to this board anytime you want to, and ask questions. But she is your commissioner, give her an awp bikini to answer your question, then you may not have to come to the board.
Okay, how much time do you think it will take?
But just for the record, y'all are talking about me like I'm not here, but here I am. Okay, so, um, I, I have requested quite a bit of information on the Americas ditch, which is your concern, and I believe that you feel that the issues that we're looking at here are surrounding the Americas ditch.
Correct.
Okay, well, like you said, I wasn't here, I've gone back and I've reviewed a lot of information that, uh, Mr. Butler has provided regarding the Americas ditch project, and I will say that I too have some considerable concerns. Um, it, it's far beyond the scope of our discussion here today, but just in broad brush strokes, some of the main concerns are the fact that when, when we entered into this contract, um, back, well, the bid was in oh seven, so it's been a number of years, but there was no proof of workers' comp submitted for the contract. Um, at the time of the bid, and in fact, there was no workers' comp, um, this company had no workers' comp, and it is a felony in the state of Florida to work without workers' comp. Now, the fact that we had contractor out there working without workers' comp made us statutory employee, for your, excuse me, of folks out there working on that ditch, which subjected the county to unlimited liability. Unfortunately, we've gotten past that, and nothing happened, but had it happened, um, the county would have been on the hook for any liability of that contractor or his employees. So, I guess my, I would, I would start by asking Mr. Butler regarding this contract. Um, that issue of workers' comp and not providing it in the bid, there was also, um, regarding the general liability, there was no language for an additional insured, um, being the county. Um, also in the bid, there were bond efficiency, there was no bid bond provided. Um, they did produce a letter saying that the bonding company would bond up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The bid was almost three hundred and thirty, just shy of three thirty. So, even the letter saying that the bonding company would bond this contractor was only for two hundred and fifty thousand, however, they, they need to post a bid bond when they bid. Um, the performance bond, which was due ten days within the contract signing, um, which would have been November second of two thousand and seven. It wa, it wasn't placed until January sixteenth of oh eight, okay, so they would have for, uh, forfeited their bid bond, but of course, there was no bid bond. But my question is, these discrepancies in just the bidding process alone, who made the decision on who awarded the bid? And I know there were numerous bids on this project, uh, and I, I'm curious as to why this went to this particular contractor, and one thing that when I was in the audience at these meetings, that used to drive me nuts, is the board would sit up here and talk about contractors, 'cause everybody knew who they were, but I was out in the audience and didn't know, so I will say that the contractor on this project was Bailey and Sons Diversified Inc. But, for the sake of, uh, being, we, we're just gonna refer to him as the contractor for the sake of, um, discussion. So, can you enlighten me on this?
Mr. Chairman, in one month, it'll be, it'll be finished five years, so, I don't recall all the details, it started, it was six years ago. I don't recall, I don't recall if you requested workers' comp or not, and you requested me, but, but what I did, I, I did do everything we could find. So, I was wanting to turn it, point down, and whatever, in front of the county commission, uh, the county commission voted on it, I didn't get a vote on it. Uh, what the board did do, we took the lowest bid, which was about a hundred and two thousand dollars less than the next local responsive bidder. And, and it's hard at one time for to pay bid to, to take a higher bid, and become all those limits, so I can, I can take a little bit, so we were, we were bidding local bid, local bidder, um, um, about a hundred and two thousand dollars less than what G A C did the same job for.
Well, there, there were in fact two other bids that were just slightly higher than this bid, now, they may not have been local contractors, but I, we took on a tremendous amount of liability, and I would say that it's clear we, we probably hired a contractor that wasn't qualified to do this work, just to have a local bidder. And the cost could have been astronomical, and we are still paying for it now, um-
But I do agree, the low, the low bidder is not always the best bid. We did it today, we took a high bid, and brokered you for the private apartments.
At the recommendation of Mr. Richardson.
Uh, we, we did all, I was there a week ago, we all went through, we just looked at both, two vendors, and I, I agree too that the high bid was the best bid.
Well, and, and I just want to reiterate that this bid should have been discarded, it should not have been concerned, I mean, considered, because it, it didn't meet the qualification, so all the other folks bidding, who went out and posted a bid bond, who had their workers' comp in place, they, they were penalized by this contractor who came in, who was not qualified to do the work, and the bod, the bod, the bid was not even qualified to be considered. And in addition to that, the completion time, uh, under the contract, it was a hundred and twenty days. The actual timeframe was a hundred and fifty-one days, past the time that it should have been completed. So, a hundred and fifty-one days additional, more than twice the length of the contract, and there were liquidated damages in the contract of two hundred and fifty dollars a day, which would have totaled about thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to the county for the liquidated damages for not completing the project. I, I don't believe those were ever collected. Do you know if they were collected?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, um, now we have additional costs and ongoing problems. So, as of August first of this year, county personnel have repaired one hundred and thirty leaks associated with this project at a cost of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. At this time, the county personnel are aware of approximately sixteen additional leak problems that will need to be addressed, and that cost is yet to be determined. This is just a, a poster child for, um, a wrong way to do business. And I will continue to look at this, again, like I said, these are just the initial problems, but it makes, it concerns me about how many other projects have been done this way, and the potential liability. I, I don't know if the, if the board is really considering what can happen to this county when we expose ourselves to liability, but unfortunate that nothing has happened, but you, you can't roll the dice forever and not have something happen. And at the last meeting, um, Commissioner Macklemore informed me that I wasn't gonna get information on the road contracts, and, and now I'm beginning to wonder if, if this is why, if we have some of these same issues. Um, I know I haven't answered all of your questions specifically that you had on your list, but I will continue to work with you. I am your commissioner, I do represent you, and I represent every person in Gulf County, not just District Three, and I wanna make that clear. So, do you have any other questions right now?
Well, as you said, most of the questions weren't answered or admitted anyway, but, you know, the, one of the major questions is in terms of the county, not only this project, but all projects, who was watching the contractor? Whether it be the lowest bidder, the highest bidder, you always still, you don't build a house and walk off, you always have someone watching the, the subs and the contractors. So, who was watching out for the best interest of the county and the people of this county during this project?
Well, that's a good question, and somebody had to be signing off on the work, and, um, the information that I have is that the engineer was Preble Rich, and I assume that they were, uh, managing this project, is that correct, Mr. Butler?
Preble Rich was the engineer on your project.
So, they were signing off on the progress payments?
Uh, essentially, road line project, as in all road line projects, or any project, what property, so we was in the business, in Porter County, they, in this case, resigned it, and inspected it.
Well, who made the decision not to enforce our own bid rules, um, state statute, and the liquidated damages in our contract? We didn't enforce the terms of our contract, and I don't understand why we even have a contract if we're not going to abide by the rules of the contract. Do, do you know who was making these decisions? Were these board decisions?
County commission.
Mm-hmm. Well, does the commission have any comment?
Uh, uh, let me make a comment on this. Am I, am I in order?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, your comments, first of all, common denominator in this, uh, is it falls back on setting board now. I wasn't on the board, Commissioner Bryant wasn't, I, I heard, uh, I heard the, uh, uh, Macklemore, he, he referred to it as a billion dollar ditch, and I don't think he was on that either. Uh, uh, maybe, I think he was kinda opposed to it. Bottom line is, common denominator is it all, this falls back on the board that was setting at that time. Now, this is probably, it'd be, uh, it goes back again, this was probably, you should all learn, you learn from your mistakes, and this was, to my opinion, uh, nothing against Preble Rich, nothing against contractor, he bid the low bid, he got it, uh, he said he could do it, and these were not bad people, I don't think that the contractor got it, I wouldn't have used him, because it'd be just like going to Tennessee, hiring a contractor that works in the rock, in mountainous areas, can they hear what he's saying? They, this stuff is tricky, a tide comes in, the water comes in, tide goes out, the water goes out, unless you have experience, my choice of these, I've looked over this bid list, would have been, uh, Gulf asphalt. Not that I'm in bed with Gulf asphalt, but the fact that they're right over there in Bay County, they dealing sand every day, so they have experience, you gotta leave your personal stuff out of it sometime, and who's gonna do your best job for you? But, again, as it was stated, where you took a high bid, you were showing this, that, you gotta get all that out of your system and go for it, so, while saying these people have done it with bad job, I'm saying they were not experienced at this, and they should have probably, as the commissioner said, they shouldn't have been given the job, but they were, and that's all, that's like a broken egg, how we gonna prevent from baking the next day? We can't do about, anything about this broken egg. But, uh, yes, the board needs to be more, watch this stuff closer and all, and not less, and you had, at that time, we got to say you had a board that was a little bit, uh, uh, yeah, played way out of box on certain things, and it's, it, the engineers, you, you hold them responsible for all this, did they come report to the board? I don't know, I wasn't here. Did the board say, yes, they get about it? I don't know, I wasn't here. But we gotta look at all that, and let's go forward with it. But again, I want to tell you, while we're here on this same subject, uh, Mr. Corran, I appreciate you coming here, and you're a special person, I respect you highly, and you and I, we're never gonna, we're gonna leave out of here friends, and we may disagree, but we're gonna try to work for the best interests of the county, sometimes I, I get, uh, you know, a lot of negative stuff thrown at me, but I'm still, that's my job, and I think you're the same way, I think we all are here on this board, so, I just wanted to say that.
If I'll discuss with you for a moment? Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, I just wanna clear this up, but I, I was the one that was, the one that was sitting on the board at the time of this project.
I don't know, Mr. Yes.
I was, I know, I-
Okay.
I fully remember.
Okay.
But I think this is an issue that I thought, and I think researcher will show, that I voted against this project. I called it the million dollar ditch, that would not work. So, just wanna lay that out there, you know, but this is not, this is not getting the problem resolved. Now, I don't, I don't have a problem of going out there, because it's your problem here, 'cause I've been out there all weekend in Land District Three, seem like I stay out there quite a bit, for flood and issues or whatever, but I don't have a problem of going out there and looking at this issue, if I can help you with it, I will. So, I'm gonna leave it at that.
And I will continue to work with you.
Thank you, well, we got a lot of support here. Well, that's my, my point overall, is I know you ca- Well, that's my, my point overall, is I know you can't go back in the past. What I'm trying to bring up, and I know it's painful, but we continue to do the same things. We could find other projects like this. And I think overall, the, the design, Mr. Butler stated, the design and the inspection was by Preble Rich. I don't even think you can do that, you can't inspect your own design. It's a county road, or, I mean, what'd you say, road, whatever?
Common practice.
It's common practice. Well, this is indicative of the results. Maybe you should, the board, the new board, should analyze having fox guard the henhouse. You don't hire the same person to design it and inspect it. You don't have someone writing their own checks. It's just common practice in regular business, and I think to save the county money in the future, the board should address this issue. That's my point overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Um, I don't live in District Three, but some of my confusion is, um, Christie McElroy, thirteen eleven Woodward Avenue, Port St. Jeff. We had Mr. Corin, I believe, run for District Five. Is that correct? And claimed that he lived in District Five. Is that correct? Did he run for, against Mr. Jaeger? So, if you're, if we're divided by districts, and we don't have countywide voting yet, he claimed to live in District Five. At the same time, he was living with his girlfriend in District Three, which I believe, I don't know if his name is even on the title for that house. So, I'm, I'm confused, does he own property in District Three, or is it his companion that owns property? And, and then I guess the other thing that I'm curious about is, um, I understand that part of his fix for his home was he dug up the neighbor's driveway and caused problems for the neighbor. And then the neighbor had to call several commissioners, I believe, Commissioner McLemore and Commissioner Jaeger, and then they had to come out and fix what Mr. Corin had created for the neighbor. What kind of cost was associated with that? So, I have no problems coming to this podium as a citizen, because I sit in the audience for city meetings, county meetings, port meetings, TDC meetings, and trying to put the threads together. But what we also need to look at is what is personal and what is business? And if we're going to fain business, then let's say it's about business, that it's not personal. And so, that's all that I would like to say. We've got, you know, five county commissioners, uh, we all need to work together, but let's make sure that we're not wasting time pulling travel documents, et cetera, et cetera, because it's personal. So, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Chairman, next on agenda is Herbert J. Carter, Proclamation Nation, Dixie Pines.
I've been in the entertainment world for fifty-five years.
Could you give the country name and address, please, sir?
My name is Herbert John Carter, people call me Country, because of my music. I live on, um, five eight eight six Axis Lane, Tallahassee, Florida, three two three oh four. The purpose of my being here is to establish a foundation of music, because no one has established a foundation in Florida, Georgia, and Alabama, we've been so-called copycats by, um, recording other people's culture through music. For example, Cajun, Texas wing, hillbilly, bluegrass, folk appellation. So, my plan is to broaden this base by accepting, acceptance through proclamation from county commissions and city councils, so that talent will have an opportunity to build a career, independently postured, to, uh, uh, represent not only the music, but the culture that each county may, may have.
Have, have you got a proclamation or anything that I can review?
I've got copies in my briefcase, I was...
I believe it's in the information packet.
There's a copy of one from the year two thousand, from City of Tallahassee, in the information packet.
Um, there's a need to provide a means for talent in any given county to move outside of the county and interact with other county, other talent. And my plan is to focus on individual US highways, so that they can participate from one end to the other, and, uh, talent that's down here can move up and down to the other end of the highway and, and not necessarily compete with other talent, but learn from each other, and build their own foundation of, of, um, support. It's, the proclamation also declares Dixie Pines as a cultural exchange, which means, um, as we move up and down ninety-eight, I can go inland on three nineteen, uh, two thirty-one, three thirty-one, and encourage tourists to experience the culture county by county, as they move, um, from their home county back and forth. And, uh, this should be attractive to people that would, um, come to annual events and help establish annual events if they don't, some county may not have one.
Just, Quinn, I think, Miss Jennifer, you need to look at this early and get involved with it, you know, and, and do some research on it, and feed it back to the board, if you would, before we finally make a decision on this. Um, we lean on her a lot, she's our TDC director, and she's responsible for tourists, you know, coming into the, to the town and all, so, I would love to, for her to do that, before I make a decision on it.
Okay.
We're trying to look it over.
Yeah. Okay. Would, would it be appropriate time for me to come back and address the council, or work through that?
We can do it at the next board meeting, correct? Actually, we can put it in the, in the, after we bid, we can talk with Miss Jennifer, and she feels comfortable, and with it or whatever, she can actually put in the consumer agenda, and we can pass it by just a motion of passing the agenda, because you wouldn't have to address the board.
Okay.
Can you leave your number with the administrator?
Sure. You need my phone number?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that's all, it's on the agenda, I do not have anything, uh, no slips or anything, so...
Apparently, last week, um, or, uh, in the last week or so, we've got a letter, I have a copy of a letter that went out to Florida Fish and Wildlife, um, from Mr. Hammond as Assistant County Administrator, requesting that Fish and Wildlife remove their equipment, their boats, uh, from county property. And the letter states that it is a follow-up letter to the previous letter, and I was, provided a copy of a letter dated, um, July twenty-ninth of twenty-ten, which was apparently a letter this was being followed up to. So, I, I wanted to ask, um, Mr. Hammond or Mr. Butler, is there an intervening letter that, that this current letter dated August twelfth was a follow-up to? Or is it from the letter of two thousand and ten?
Two, two previous letters.
Okay, what was, when was the, um, I've got a, a letter here, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten, and then one August twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, can you tell me, was there one in between there?
There's one in between, I'm sure, I don't know the date, we, we weren't able to find either letters, the, the Canadian Fish Commission actually brought us that letter that you have with them when they came to that list. So, that's correct.
That's correct.
So, are you saying that the August twelfth letter, Mr. Hammond, that you signed, you didn't, this isn't your letter?
No, 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 I said there was two previous letters.
You couldn't...
We have copies of either one, you said there was one intervening. I'm sorry, I said there was one intervening. On both previous occasions, we spoke with Canadian Fish Commission, and they were going to move the boats, actually, they moved them from the parking lot one time to the back forty, because the chairman at the time, um, decided on his own to not enforce Mr. Butler's decision to have him move the boats. That's why they were not moved prior. But, yes, on two previous occasions, we had contact with them, and on both times, the chairman at the time chose to, to proceed the authority of the administrator and allow them to keep the boats here.
So, this was a decision by you, Mr. Butler, to move the...
Yes, it's a, the commissioner, I've never had a conversation with Commissioner, Commissioner Williams, he told me, as I wanted to go and make contact with, had they received, and said, bring the boats back. The issue started in court overflow parking lot, on the, um, south side of the Grand Pond. That parking lot was built for court roads, when there was not room to park at the courthouse. After they received, parked the boats in the parking lot, backing the boats into the curb, and so it happened one day, I saw a lady, you know, um, like, without her on it. Um, so, left up in the bay, and, and left back, and was scared by, and prayed about what was supposed to happen to the parking lot. She goes, uh, never saw it again, probably by the sea, and then they moved the boats over, to Mid Rivers, on the south side of EOC, in our way. In the twenty mile route, they rushed the boats out in the parking lot, and we had to walk through the water to get inside our bay, and walk through the carpet, and what discussed was ongoing, 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 and, I'm missing the high water gate, we had to pay, and, and they messed up the parking lot, and the using the parking facilities as if it belonged to Star Florida. So, then, when, when the car went down, when the EOC put cars up, keeping off EOC, because that's where we caught the, the hard bay, for the command base, that we caught the emergency management trucks, uh, they were taking over the parking lot, we couldn't even park the lot. After discussion, they moved the boats over to between the maintenance man and the EOC board. Guys could do crash call, grab it up, load, and then, that's when the letter went out. That's how it took a long time to get to port in two thousand and ten, the same letter to them, said, please, anyway, if you could, move, move the, move the boats. At the same time, we were having problems with the dumpster behind the courthouse. When the mornings would get to work, the dumpster would overflow in the trash. So, our, our works director at the time took his personal deer camera, put up, and we caught our trucks, that weekend, that Saturday and Sunday, unloading trash in the dumpster behind the courthouse. Which people have been in this building, complaining to the county commissioner about the unkept inside the courthouse grounds, because it was overflowing. All, all cameras, five pounds, we kept EOC unloading trash in the county dumpster behind the courthouse, and...
In twenty-ten, or now? In twenty-ten, you're talking?
Yeah, yeah, that's the time that went out. That's when the letter went out, because one, they were all loaded the place, and we couldn't function properly, we had overflow court parking lot, full court roads, all area taken up, at least a part of that parking lot. And then they knew where the EOC, but then the way EOC, we came to give our individuals in EOC, then they knew where we were in the grass, and we tried, all, all the soil around the EOC was hauled in, it was, if you look at it, like natural, we, we got the EOC up and pounding, filled probably two hundred dump truck loads of soil, with top soil and top area, trying to get the grass growing, and that procedure did a good job of killing that dirt up with the trailers and the trucks and the pool dryers, and did a good job of filling the dumpsters up. That's when the letter went out. And then unbeknown to me, actually, they moved the boats out, and Mr. Williams called them and said, please move the boats back. And that happened the second time, but, uh, I, I never had a discussion with the commissioner about, but, but then, then, when I go down, I go upon the public rest day, I go back to EOC on Friday or Saturday, by our way, on, on the public rest day. And they would be behind the EOC building, EOC behind the pressure washers, drying our water, using our water, tearing the grass up, uh, was pressure washing the boats out. So, that's the reason I had a conversation with him, and he wrote the first letter, I about sending, I about sending a letter, letting them know, they need to find some other stable cover, that's not stable, um, top of our topsoil, or trying to grow grass, and, and here all we're looking at, budget, uh, horrendous, what the weather there is, horrendous complex. And for stable cover, you can, you don't give your nickel, or don't give your penny, to, to replace anything, including water bill, or grass, or, um, the, the dents and vehicles that you give the boat trailer toner to stick out into the parking lot. So, that's, that's one, one of the reasons we're going to move.
Well, um, as far as what went on in twenty-ten, um, I think we need to look at what the condition is now, and my understanding is, the issue is the water usage, and also tearing up the grass, and that, um, now, are they dumping that kind of trash now, or was that only seen in twenty-ten?
No, the issue at hand, we can go back and look at the minutes, we can approach that code, and complain to the board about trash, and dumpster overflow, and at the same time, they complained about the animal control board, and, uh, then, too, too many animals in it, all of that, that, that was the catalyst, that was emphasis on...
But, I mean, currently in twenty-thirteen, are we having problems with FWC dumping trash in, large amounts of trash in our hamster?
I don't know, I, I think, I, I don't know...
Okay, well, here, here's my thoughts on this. Um, I think that we need to work together with other governmental agencies and with law enforcement. And, and the issue that I've been told is that the boats, FWC's boats are now up at Howard's Creek, and down at the, um, State Park. And they would cooperate in water rescues or any other kind of emergency situation as needed, but where their boats are currently, because they have to be on state property, um, hinders any kind of immediate response. So, my understanding is that they are willing to pay for water usage. Um, I, I would like for us, instead of just telling them, you have to get out, and, and making them move, I, I would like to try to work with them, so that, um, I don't think we have to have a grassy area. If we have an area that doesn't interfere with the EOC or the courthouse, if there is an area where the boats can be, maybe the state needs to come in and put some type of a gravel surface down that they can park on, and reimburse for the water, which I think they're willing to do, but, uh, rather than just tell them they have to get out, I would, I would like for this board to rescind, uh, this letter, and let us work with FWC, and find a, a solution that works for the county and the state. I think it's important to the folks of Gulf County that, um, that we have that ability for rescues close by. So, I'll make a motion to, um, Dawn to reach out, and, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Butler, to reach out and work with FWC on a solution to the issues of the water usage and tearing up the ground.
Got a motion by Miss Bryant?
Looking discussion, uh, Dawn, I know, I know, uh, Nick, Ali, head of FWC, if you'd like for me to contact Nick, say, Nick, here are our issues, let's, 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 let's address some of the issues. I still don't think that's gonna be the area that we pick out for them to use, uh, uh, you know, as far as, I don't think we need to rescind any letter or anything, they know that that letter was coming, they've had two or three, and you've had discussions, but if y'all will, I'll, I'll reach out to Nick, say, Nick, here are our issues, let's, let's fix them.
Well, this has been over for three years, um, they have not until the, the colonel and the captain sitting on the mouth, has flagged, like, we told him, he offered a token two hundred dollars for water. Um, and, that, that, they would not be waiting for it to work, paying what it costs. Here we are, we run the county, our sheriff does not even have one look, and they have seven, seven tentacles up and throwing paper out, and, and using water, and, and two, they're just full of food for thought. My pageant, my, my stand, when it goes off water rescue, uh, for thirty-plus years, and every time we go out, David's got one set, and he's not standing to, never, never have I seen, uh, go out and get a kayak or someone else out the road, night time, wherever it is, and FWC drive up. Um, for them to respond, uh, is, is, on, on, on lifespan, if single beats have been running system.
Let me, let me add this in, throw this in, as, as experience from search and rescue for the past fourteen, fifteen years, I can tell y'all, you break down on Lake Wimato?
James Fish is not coming to get you and pulling you in. You better call search and rescue.
Well, I will amend my motion, leave out the rescinding the letter, but I will amend my motion and, and make a motion that, um, if Commissioner Yeager is willing to, to reach out to FWC. I think it's important that we have a working relationship with all agencies.
Hello, Nick.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant?
Go ahead, Dawn.
I hope in the conversation, I do understand that we're quoting the newspaper, Stan Crooken, and then I'm next to him, Crooken. He quoted me in a newspaper. I've seen certain things. Um, he, to my knowledge, never seen him. I've seen him a thousand times on TV. And to his knowledge, my understanding to his knowledge, that he'd never received, we got three years' worth of correspondence. So, I hope in the conversation that they throw out some things that's not exactly right, but if they want you straight, we want you straight. But, and to you, FWC, this is my first time someone has been asked to, to remove this act from county property. You, you know, people, but we know, it goes through , uh, Fosse Park, Big Hill Park, uh, Dead Rice Park, and cap, on, on the roadway at Selena's Park. We have asked over the years, that's something that, whether I like to do or not, makes it part of what I get to do, say, "Please, can you move your public truck?" It's been seven days, six weeks at Selena's Park on the roadway.
Um, Dawn, I, I would like to get a copy of the correspondence, uh, has been going back and forth, trying to let them know about the issues.
You have, uh, could be one missing.
The two letters, I mean, you said that there was correspondence going back and forth over the-
Two thousand and ten, two thousand and thirteen, the first letter.
Just very brief. The, the first letter from two thousand and ten says that the, um, there's just no space, uh, left for them. And then, the one, the current one, um, is just, it's, "Please remove your vehicles as soon as possible." It's also very brief.
That, that is a correspondence.
Of course, correspondence.
That is, there's been trouble, there's been trouble, uh, with the officers in the parking lot, uh, conversations about, it is, it's bad to put in on a dry day and you got water standing in the parking lot because FWC is in the parking lot, can't peep from the window of my office, pressure washing the bucket.
I think at the end of the day, uh, you know, like I said, I know Nick, where it comes to some of our small county coal, you might have met him at, at one of the small county coalition meetings. Uh, he's a reasonable guy. But I will include you, Dawn, in that discussion, because you know the history a whole lot better than I do. Uh, but we've got to fix the problem. I don't think, I don't think fixing the problem's telling them to come back. Uh, that's not going to fix our issues. I think fixing the problem may be helping them find another location or something like that. But Nick needs to get out of Tallahassee. So, I'll ask him to come to Port St. Joe, not us to go to Tallahassee, and, and, and let's, let's look around down here. But Nick loves, loves to come down.
If we have a location and they can reimburse for any costs or, or take care of any improvements that need to be made.
But do we, do we need a motion today?
I mean, what, it'll work out.
Okay, and then, I just have, um, one other thing. At, at the last meeting, um, Commissioner McLemore made a, a comment to me that was off the microphone. And out of respect for Mr. Chairman, who was trying to move the meeting along, I did not address it at the time. But Commissioner McLemore made the statement that, that he's after me and that he's going to get me. So, I would like to ask, in a public meeting, what you meant by that, Commissioner McLemore, if you could explain.
Maybe Mr. Mr. stood, and I said, "I've been working with you."
Oh, okay. I don't think so. So, you don't want to explain what you were talking about? Okay, I'm, I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, I, I want to test bases with Mr. Butler and, uh, maybe Jeremy. I want to follow up on the Sacred Heart deal with the Department, you know, North Bend County, Roger Hall, to see where he's at, see if he's, he's over with that. He set a date for September the fifteenth, to have that place off and running. So, that's what I'm, yeah, what I'm-
Commissioner, I have, um, and Houston's not here today, the ongoing negotiations with Ms. Mulroney, who works for Roger, on the EMS, uh, transport contract. I have, uh, a meeting with her this week, and, and I'll follow up. I hadn't heard anything since we were at that joint workshop at the Honeyville Center. I heard the same date as you did, and we reported the last meeting, it was the fifteenth. Um, but I haven't had any discussions about that, so I'll follow up this week. Um, our meet, our first meeting is September is prior to that date, so I'll come back and report to you all as to what the latest I hear from you.
Okay. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'm understanding, I'm here to do the grapevine, I'm going to research a little bit further, that the food payment down in this area in the county is very, very low. So, I would like for whoever's running that program to give me a call, and let's see if we can, not help them out a little bit.
Uh, just, just one thing. We, we had another restore meeting. We have them about once every couple of months. And generally, we try to have them with fact, uh, uh, meetings so you don't have to pay class to go down there. But at any rate, uh, uh, Mr. Novak and I went down. Uh, we're progressing. Uh, we are still waiting on Treasury to, to set rules. We've got one billion dollars in that account.
You're talking about the United States Treasury, yeah?
Yes, yes. We've got one billion dollars in that account. Of that, about nearly three million of it is Gulf counties. You're marked for Gulf County. We need them to move along. I may bring back a, a form of a resolution or something to send to our congressmen and to our senators, uh, uh, about this. We need them to move forward. As far as this consortium's concerned, on the pots, uh, two and three monies, we as a consortium's trying to figure out, you know, number one, can we, can we proceed with a plan that's required by the Restore Act? And, and, and before we get the Treasury rigs, I, I don't think that we can. Uh, but there are costs, and what we've, what we've asked, uh, Treasury is to allow us to go ahead and, and, uh, for example, our travel. Or, for example, uh, some of these counties are already putting, uh, trying to hire consultants to put their individual counties' plans together. We as a consortium, we're trying to figure out, when do we start? Because we don't, number one, go, "Hey, you got no money to contribute to that." And so, we're trying to figure out, how do we move forward with the, with the plans that we need to do? Uh, it's, it's been slow. We've been waiting on Treasury for four months now or better. And, uh, just, uh, just inform the board, we're working closely. We may, at the end of the day, go ahead and put it out in RFQ for, for some there's, I'm telling you, when you go to these meetings, there's one-third of them are consultants. A third of them are, are, are maybe agency heads or non-governmental entities that are, that are wanting to present. They're all looking for the funds. And then a third of them's public. But we have about, there's probably two hundred from the public at that meeting. Um, so, we're trying to move forward. We're trying to figure out, uh, how to, how to set these plans. And what I'd like to do is for this board to ask the committee, and I don't, we, we hadn't met as a committee probably in several months, Dawn.
We had not, because we took, we went to page two, and we took it all, and we agreed, and we got final application, and we, we convened, do it again. It's been a few months.
Yeah. What we may need to do is get that committee together and maybe a subcommittee of it, you know, uh, some of the business people that are on there, like, uh, D. Blaylock's, Pat Argon, and ask them to, to form maybe an RFQ or an RFP for how to proceed with, with some of the planning. Not to hire anybody. At the end of the day, we do believe that Treasury is getting awful close. They've, they've submitted some, some, uh, some things for comments, but we think they're awful, awfully close to getting to there. And it may be, at the end of the day, that if, if you talk with the consortium attorney, that the consortium attorney says, "Look, you can piggyback what the consortium's doing." And so, we don't even have to get in the process of picking. But I think at the end of the day, it's probably time for that committee to at least get a subcommittee together to talk about, how do we proceed with that, with that plan going forward? But the restore money is there. A portion of it, uh, the, the transocean portion, and it's a billion dollars. They were fine a billion four, and four hundred million of it went to other things. Some of it went to NIFWIT, some of it went to NERDA, some of it went different places. But we're proceeding forward. We're trying to get there. Uh, the money's going to be there. Money is already there, part of it. And, and once the, once the BP, uh, lawsuit gets through in, in New Orleans, hopefully, there'll be some more money. Jeremy, is there anything I missed as far as what, uh, what's going down, on down the county?
No, that was-
Okay.
Majority of the conversation.
I think at the end of the day, we're moving forward, and I'll, we'll, we'll continue. I'm not going to spend any of Gulf County's money until we get some of their, uh, their monies. Uh, but the money's there, and, and we're looking forward to the committee recommending some projects, uh, with that. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, thank Commissioner Yeager and, uh, Attorney for going down and keeping Gulf County informed. Gulf County was one of the lead counties. Whereas we were wrapping up, we were meeting every Tuesday over here, we were coming to get to a point where we couldn't advance anymore because of the United States Treasury. Some of the counties down the state were up here, drove all the way up, just to see what, they didn't, they hadn't even got in the ballgame yet. And we were already, you know, at the end of the game there. Uh, couple of things. First, for the people here and the people that, uh, watch it on television and all, our public works, as soon as we can get a little break in this weather, uh, this has been one of our, uh, very rainy season. Just as soon as we can get a break in this weather, the, the public works people will be out and try to get the ones on unpaved roads, try to get you back where they're passable. And, uh, again, we got to have a break in the, secondly, I received a call, and, uh, I think all of us received a call this past Friday, in this retains to the weather. Now, I'm not sure of the street, but it's out on the old ninety-eighth, uh, I don't even know the name. It's in that between, it's kind of locked in there between Windmark.
Ain't Joseph Shores?
That's it, that's it. Anyway, a young lady out there called me, and I asked her to come down and physically look at it, which I did. And when I got there, I found out Commissioner, uh, Yeager had already been there, and that Commissioner McLemore sent a crew when we were hitching down to try to relieve some water, and Commissioner Smiley was already involved in it, and, uh, the Health Department. But we, this board, we've got to get with our public works and possible engineers, something's got to be addressed out there. I'm, I'm, I'm not exaggerating. That was probably, they had to deep freeze us. Didn't even get the cars in the carport. Because, uh, when, uh, I, I don't know this, apparently when Windmark was developed, they had to close off some dishes. We do have property out there. The county does own some property in that, and we, we've got to address this. Those people can't, uh, continue like that when, when we have these monsoons that come in on us.
I agree, and I did go, go down there. And we've done similar things, and, uh, got that same issue in my, uh, district, uh, and before, even before I came back on, I think Commissioner Barnes helped a couple of those, uh, folks. Get in between those sand dunes, and there's nowhere hardly to drain it. We actually, uh, the Homeowners Association down at the, at the Cape of Boardwalk bought, uh, materials and bought a pump, and we helped them kind of install it. And the only way to get some of that water out is actually pumping out. But it may, we may have to do the same thing, similar, down there that we helped Boardwalk and, and a couple others after the, after one of those developments went in. Uh, may have to do the same thing there, but at, at any rate, we need to help them because it's a safety issue.
I think in the past, if I remember correctly, I, I think we've done some engineering work on that issue out there. So, do you remember, Dawn, Michael, when we did some engineering work on that problem? But there may be something out there that we can search and look at as already.
We have been out on it. We have hard, on the night railways, and the perfectly dedicated railway will put sand to help, uh, there's some of the problem. We've got some elevation. Um, there was a pond away, with the intent of letting water on, from, from to go to a pond. Idea would be the water would be pumped from point eight, point B, and B, in the pond. So, I think it's up here to the pond.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Clay, have we heard anything on that USS SAD? Come to the podium and, kind of give us update on it.
Clay Smolwud, Public Works, yes, sir. Uh, USDA gave us to go ahead to go out to bid on the project, the sidewalk improvements along MLK. And also, that includes the CDBG waterline improvements over there as well. So, that ad will probably get in the paper next week, uh, thirty days or so for advertisement or see bids. And so, that, that process is moving forward. Yes, sir.
Do I have anything else from the board? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do we have anything from the board? Can I get a motion to adjourn? We got a motion by Mr. McLemore, second by Mr. Yeager.